Good morning. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Speaker, we have quorum.
I call this meeting of City Council for November 21st, 2024 to order and acknowledge that we're on Treaty I territory, the home and traditional lands of the Anishnaabe, Inananu, and Dakota peoples, and in the national homeland of the Red River Métis. Our drinking water comes from Sho Lake 40, First Nation, in Treaty III territory. We'll now have the opening prayer. Please rise if you are able, and we'll hear from Councillor Sherry Rollins.
Creator, whose spirit is in all creatures, we pray that your spirit be awakened within all the inhabitants of Treaty land. Creator, with mercy, accept our prayer on behalf of our city and its government. We ask for blessings upon this land, upon its inhabitants, upon its leaders, public officers and officials who faithfully devote themselves to the needs of the public. Please help us act justly, to love kindness, and walk humbly. May the one who brings peace on high bring peace and prosperity to our world and keep us in safety.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Madam Speaker, Councillor Sharma, His Worship Mayor Gillingham, Councillors Hallard, Rowadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Gilroy, Luks, Mays, Orliko, Rollins, Santos, Schreier, and Councillor Wyatt.
Thank you. Please join me in welcoming our page for today, Himani Butt of Dakota Collegiate, who resides in the St. Norbert Saint River Ward. Thank you for serving council today.[140.51][140.51](applause) We'll now move into morning announcements. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to begin by thanking everyone who came to the Santa Claus Parade on Saturday. The opportunity to be the grand marshal of the 2024 Santa Claus Parade was a perfect way to kick off the holiday season as we continue to celebrate our Winnipeg 150 celebrations. City Winnipeg has been a significant supporter of the Santa Claus Parade for all the 115 years of the parade, so it was great to see so many city departments represented at this family-friendly and free event that brings the community together in the heart of our city. After the parade, I headed to the Grey Cup to cheer on the Bombers on Sunday in their fifth straight Grey Cup appearance. While it certainly was not the outcome that we were all hoping for, on behalf of all of us, I want to congratulate the Winnipeg Blue Bombers on another great season. It's pretty remarkable to make five straight Grey Cup appearances. And so do Wade Miller, Kyle Walters, Coach Michael Shea and their staff. I want to thank them. They have built an incredible franchise for all Winnipegers and in fact Manitobans to cheer on. There's been some talk about whether this team is a dynasty or not. I have to say, though, that after five conference titles in a row, five straight Grey Cup appearances, winning two of them, there's no doubt that this is a dynasty and one of the best teams the CFL has seen. So we, though, look forward as a city to welcoming all of Canada to the 112th Grey Cup in Winnipeg next year and hopefully seeing the Bombers not only appear once again in the Grey Cup but hopefully win it at home. Very excited to share that the Winnipeg 150 City versus Province Hockey Game will take place on Saturday, November 30th, at Gateway Arena. I believe this is kind of hosted by and put on by Councillor Rowadi. I want to thank him and others for this initiative. I, along with members of council and the city's public service, will face off against Premier Wab Canoo along with MLAs and provincial staff in a friendly game of hockey. Apparently, I hear, that the province has already booked some ice time and they have been taking this seriously and they're practicing. We are going to show up and play inspired, I think, without any practices at all. We'll see how this goes. But the event actually recreates a similar game that took place 50 years ago to honor Winnipeg's 100th anniversary, where Mayor Steven Jubba and the city fathers took on Premier Ed Schreier and the Golden Boys in a game of hockey. They charged a dollar for that game. Apparently, we are putting the game on for free, so admission is free for anyone who wishes to attend. Attendees are encouraged to bring a non-perishable food item for Manitoba Harvest. This morning, Madam Speaker, I would like to welcome Elder Mary Graham to City Hall, who's sitting up in the gallery to my left. Mary is a Red River Métis family member and survivor. Mary planted a Manitoba Heritage Burr Oak tree to honor her late sister, May Marie Perezian, and other missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, men, and boys, and members of the 2S LGBTQ+IA+ community. Elder Belinda Van der Brock, an activist who devotes her time to helping families and survivors, supported Mary by blessing the ground around the Burr Oak tree and the sacred rock that was placed next to it. The commemorative Manitoba Heritage Burr Oak tree is located at Michel Jean Park in Point Douglas, had the support of Councillor Ross Edie and City Winnipeg's Urban Forestry Branch Martha Berwinski. An oak tree was chosen because the oak tree represents strength, endurance, honor, nobility, and wisdom. And in Elder Mary's own words, quote, "We all need to support each other to raise awareness, to encourage change, to honor the families and survivors of MMIWG, MMIMB, and members of the 2S LGBTQIA+ community to stop this violence." I encourage all of us to learn more about this tree and about all of this initiative by searching MMIWG Manitoba Tree Register. I end today, Madam Speaker, my announcements with two very sad announcements. The first is regarding Darryl Stotzky, and it is with great sadness that I take a moment to recognize the passing of Darryl Stotzky, husband to longtime mayor's office staff member Janine Stotzky. And we all know Janine. Janine has served three consecutive mayors and is a key part of our team here at City Hall. As I said, she's known to everyone on council and in the administration. We send our deepest sympathies to Janine and her kids Sidney and Eric. Darryl dedicated his life to uplifting others, particularly through volunteering and his work with the Bruce Oak Memorial Foundation, and I've known Darryl since we were teenagers. So he'll be deeply missed. And as I wrap up, I also want to recognize the passing of Chad Posthumus. I think we're all devastated to learn this morning that Chad has passed away. He had a huge heart, a magnetic personality that matched his physical size. As a local boy, he was the favorite for Winnipeg Sea Bears fans and was dedicated to our community. It was always fun to watch him interact with kids in the community, young players, as he would meet them on the basketball court, and just was a wonderful guy to be around. So, on behalf of all of us, our deepest condolences to Chad's family, friends, and the entire Sea Bears organization. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Councillor Chambers. I was just going to remark that I know council joins you, Mr. Mayor, in those remarks and those condolences that you offered. Thank you. And I'd also like to also recognize Elder Mary. It's wonderful to have you here, and we appreciate the remarks you made on the initiatives Elder Mary is taking in our community. Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Chambers, for that, and we're going to move on with the agenda now. I would like to call Councillor Orliko to move the minutes of the meeting held on October 24th, 2024, November 6th, 2024. Be taken as read and confirmed.
So moved?
All in favor? Contrary, that's carried. We'll now move into delegations. First up is Christopher Clasio in support of Item 48 of the Report of the Executive Policy Committee dated November 13th, 2024, regarding the 2024 Open Data Annual Report and Chief Construction Officer. Okay, he is not present David Grant, who is appearing remotely on a number of items as listed on the delegations page of your agenda. We have our presenter online with us today.
Good morning, and thank you. It was good to hear the announcements today from the mayor and council. I think this is an essential part of the meeting, and thank you to the mayor for the condolences, et cetera. I'd like to add that a week from tomorrow, Operation Red Nose will begin driving folks home from festive parties. If you need one, but do not bring your own designated driver, please call ORN. On topic Services Number Six, Needles in the Park. I recently, at a couple meetings, took the time to explain how programs in other cities better deal with sharps and how we dealt with them in my lab. I was followed in delegation by a recovered user. He made the same points, but much more powerfully. We must either bring in program changes or abandon most public spaces. We must petition the minister to bring in an effective needle exchange program. I support the resolution of the committee and the powerful words of my fellow delegation. Topic EPC Number Four, Open Data. While it is noble that more data sets are being published, it is clear that the city goal of being fully transparent is not being met. We are usually denied access to reports that are critical to the decisions of council and to public understanding. I suggest that this project is serving as a distraction to the main thing of more transparency. If you seek real transparency, perhaps you should reduce the delay in the city's response to resident questions, and you should insist that all reports paid for by taxpayers are available to you, the council, and are made public. On Topic Six, Getting More Money Paid Earlier for the Taxes Ode. If getting more money sooner is a good idea, and it certainly seems to be, why not add a slip-in bit of paper with all the printed water bills we send out? I expect that the average cost of city debt is greater than the 3.45% in this early payment scheme. Have any of you asked that a higher rate be offered and for longer than a few months? On Seven, Tiff Funding. This program is like the city's art program. It provides great benefits, but to very few, with little perceptible reason. When the city is nearly out of money, why are we continuing to give away so much? Construction Officer, Topic Eight. It's unfortunate our other delegation wasn't able to appear and explains his thoughts. The delay in hiring here is worse than anything I experienced in industry and in crown corporation work. In the next few months, however, of delay, there is time to refine the requirements. Done right, this person would report regularly and be subject to very strict ethics rules. It would carry weight even after the person leaves city employed. If the engineers still had a meaningful code of ethics, there would be merit in this person being a professional engineer, not just a worker in construction, as it now reads. Thirteen Audit. The city is not making full use of one of its best management tools. Staff ignore most of the auditors' recommendations. Most of those ignored are great ideas. City and local media should be outraged. I believe that the public would be outraged if they knew that these great comments and suggestions from the auditors were not being acted on. Public Works Number One, Transit Changes. On a positive note, this plan seems to have been laid out logically. It makes large radical changes to the transit system. Odds are that paying customers may be scared away from using transit by these changes. In dissent, one must realize that transit communications have been based on untrue claims for many years. I've seen no one at City Hall ever point this out. There is no indication that the authors have considered the downside for customers in having to wait for a second bus to complete their trip. Of course, some of those times when you arrive expecting your second bus, it's already gone. That's another downside that those of us who use public transit experience. Some folks will have longer commute times with the new system. In trying to emulate large systems, our transit seems to be ignoring the fact that users of bigger systems have few alternatives, far fewer than those in Winnipeg. Mess with a New York City customer, and they still ride the transit next week. For many Winnipeg transit customers, if you mess with them and the bus they wanted isn't available anymore, they will carpool or drive the next week instead. BRT failed largely because it takes longer off-peak to get from A to B and failed to take passengers directly to their previous destinations along Pembina and downtown. I expect that more of your riders will vote with their feet in 2025. Public Works Number Three, Your Rules Forbid Public Comment on the Project Involved. Rules only allow comments on the delay. Adding a five-month delay to a task that should take no more than 20 hours makes a statement of its own on the state of the public service. The delay is the message here. I ask you to add a task to your staff. During this very long delay, please have staff open a consultation process on this topic. The results could be used by staff as they contact other cities. Public consultations are not just for selling ideas. They can actually help council to make better decisions. On Property, Topic One, Portage and Main. The information is going to be delayed substantially on the portage and main work. The idea of waiting another 180 days to begin to understand these aspects of the project is strongly contraindicated in the context of today's, of the city's current schedule. Is there no preliminary information that can be reported on these topics? It's too bad that we're not getting anything for 180 on these topics. In less than 180 days, much could be released if it's available. Absent from this topic is the link to the comparison by a professional engineer of the means of mitigating the concourse leakage. This critical information should be released right away if it exists. Allowing staff another six months does a disservice to council. Getting the background info a year after the decision was made is not ideal. People see this as a level of governance failure at City Hall, to commit to spending tens of millions of dollars and wasting thousands of hours of traveler time without the sound basis for the action that's now underway. Good governance requires a full report on the alternatives before anything is approved. We have seen none of this so far. Property, Topic Two, The Report is Delayed. This item is silent on what will happen at these sites. Perhaps the next 30 days we'll learn what this word "silent" really means. I thought perhaps that I was just ignorant of what was going on. I searched these words on the city website, using quotes even, and got nothing beyond mentions in agendas. So this topic has not been the subject of anything going on at City Hall. It only appears in agendas. Every week I hear city officials tell us that they're devoted to being transparent, but even asking at committee gets no answer on what this topic is about. Property, Topic Nine, Little Proofreading Needed. The same type has been in this topic for months. Governance Three, It's Important to Support Community Committees and Also Residents Associations. It's important that every councillor be in touch with all aspects of the lived experience of residents, and local groups, residents groups, and community committees are the best way for City Hall to know what voters want and don't want. Waste Water, Norm One. While this item fails to explain the problem in detail, those who follow current events know that the city is nearly out of spending money and that recent budgets have grabbed the profits from water and waste fees and even enforcement of laws. Those who approve that grabbing should be held to account, as the cliche goes. We hear that we will need billions to pay for the biggest wastewater project ever. The wastewater fees that we were told would pay for that project have all been spent on stuff like bike paths and artworks. If this grabbing is what the notice suggests be reviewed, then the grabbing should be ended, and I would thank you again for the time. Invite questions.
Thank you. Councillor Luks has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, for coming down or coming zooming in. You obviously, like many, care about what goes on in our city here, but I do have to point out to you that...
Councillor Luks, through the chair, questions and answers will be through the chair.
Right. So my question is, did you know, Mr. Grant, that BRT is not a failure? It's actually a resounding success. It's a greater success than they anticipated. And we see that with lineups of people waiting to get on the buses. We know we don't have enough buses, because it works. It's so desirable. We've got lineups of people. We don't have enough buses. And so I'm just saying, did you know that? Because I do take offense to the fact that you said that it doesn't work, because it does.
Thank you. David Grant, your response?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I am a customer of that route, that when I have to go downtown, I always take the blue now. But I was a customer for the 62 Express that preceded it, and that's why I've noticed that it's slower. And then right away, I compared my schedules. And the BRT is slower than the routes that preceded it. And so that's why, one reason it's failed. The other is that it no longer serves that big chunk of Pembina where we're off on the dogleg. And so people who need service there, and some of the places I go are on that strip of Pembina, and people who are used to walking from the bus to the destination in the convention center area with the old bus route, that was wonderful, the new bus route drops you off somewhere else or you have to take another bus. So it's added a five or eight-block walk for me for most of my trips down there. So that's one reason I would suggest that, and initially, there weren't people getting on the bus as much. And one thing, piece of data that I have, is that as I'm on the bus, I know who's not on the bus, you know, who's getting on and off, and we find that there are very few in off-peak hours who are actually traveling the whole length of the new BRT. Some of the logic is that one has various measures of success, and I would suggest that by taking you directly where you want to go, that's a good thing. And getting you there quicker was the whole reason. We spent an awful lot of hundreds of millions of dollars on this, on the promise that it would get you there faster. And when it takes me four minutes longer and then I have to walk further, that's not quite what was promised. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes questions under this delegation. Thank you, David Grant.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call forward Christopher Clasio, who is now in the chamber. In support of Items 48 of the Report of the Executive Policy Committee dated November 13th regarding the 2024 Open Data Annual Report and the Chief Construction Officer. Welcome.
Sorry for my lateness. I was stuck on the bus transit system, so it happens. Good morning, City Council. It's nice to see all of you twice in one week. Firstly, I would like to simply say it was my first time to speak in this City Hall through a public hearing process and a special council meeting. I think I learned a lot about City Hall through that process on Tuesday evening. Secondly, some of my comments here today will reflect on some of the things that were talked about Tuesday evening. Today, I am here speaking...
Chris, if you could speak to the items before us today?
Will do.
That it would be the purpose of your delegation, yes.
I'm not sure if the delegate understands...[1410.23][1410.23](music playing) I don't know if the delegate knows that all public hearing items need to be dealt with through the public hearing and that any information outside of the public hearing may impact the process. I want that figured out.
Thank you.
Good to know.
In addition to what I just remarked previously, speak to the agenda items before us today. Thank you, Chris.
Today, I'm speaking on Items 4 and 8 of the Report of the Executive Policy Committee on the November 13th, 2024, regarding the 2024 Open Data Report and the search of the Chief Construction Officer. Not only that, but I want to connect the dots related to the open data at City Hall and what council is looking for in this Chief Construction Officer position. As I mentioned before in the chamber, I am part of a nonprofit called Onchain Manitoba, which is about the education of blockchain technology, and I'm its communication engagement officer. As well as someone who is a civic practitioner and a policy entrepreneur, I strongly believe system and data literacy are important skillsets to have in city government. In the annual report of the open data, it talks about in 2023, the Open Cities Index was discontinued. A new benchmark was identified, What Works Cities Certification. On this note, through you, Madam Speaker, comments I've heard previously is the idea of parking maximums. That idea is not new. It's been out there for a while. And I also want to relate an idea of a criteria from What Works Cities Certification benchmarks. In one of its benchmarks is a section called Results Driven Contracting. There are eight criteria in this section that one I would like to direct City Council and public servants to look at, is the open and shared procurement data piece. There is an organization called Open Contracting Partnership. The website that they host is open-contracting.org. They have a tool called the Open Contracting Data Standard, or the OCDS. This is what it says about the open contracting on its website. Governments around the world spend estimated $13 trillion US through contracts every day, yet contracting information is often unavailable for public scrutiny. The Open Contracting Data Standard, OCDS, enables disclosure of data and documents at all stages of the contracting process by defining a common data model. It was created to support organizations increase contracting transparency and allow deeper analysis of contracting data by a wide range of users. This is what their website explains about open contracting. In the past, I've come to council to explain the current processes behind the scenes that everyday citizens like myself never see, but you as elected officials, for example, city planning and zoning. Let me go back. Citizens like myself never see, but you as elected officials do, for example, city planning and zoning. Through you, Madam Speaker, I've heard responses about, for example, as, "Oh, but our experts in City Hall says the language of as of right will be taken away from citizens." But that isn't really the case. And in my response, I would say is, "But developers do," and I'm not a developer, "regular citizens aren't allowed to directly share input to city experts in specific city projects." This leads to my belief that I don't always agree with the decisions that City Hall makes, but at the end of the day, all of you were elected. I can't change that, but what I can do is hold you all accountable and put my trust in the public servants, who you hire in key city positions, such as this new position of the Chief Construction Officer. I have spoken many times in City Hall about how I'm seeing culture change happening inside the public administration, such as recognizing that many citizens who are grateful to the city clerk's department, again, shout out to all the city clerks, all of them are the real hidden treasures of this city hall, and the hiring of Sherwood Armbruster as the interim chief administration officer and Hazel Boris as the director of property and development. In closing, as a policy entrepreneur, data is more than just qualitative data, aka numbers and expenses, on the city of Winnipeg Open Data Portal website. Data is also about the qualitative data, such as storytelling of how citizens affect everyday citizens, types of questions elected officials ask during council meetings and just regular processes, such as how much does the city pay for advertisement in media, or in terms of, or even how much City Hall gained in terms of funds from upzoning a land use policy. My last point is that new construction officer needs to have expert knowledge and requirements required to data and technology. We have technologies like artificial intelligence, machine learning, blockchain technology. During his worship's campaign, he spoke about this construction officer as helping address city inefficiencies, aka better value for city finances, is what I heard during his campaign. And so I just think that the next public administration that you hire for key positions should know about data and technology. I think that's my main point of the conversation. And again, I just want to acknowledge that data isn't just something on an open data portal. It's about you engaging citizens at the forefront about different city policies, and the only way we as citizens... And you, the only way we as citizens do that, in the most part, isn't through open houses or through this chamber. It's through the election process. And so talking about these policies that the city is planning to do to affect the services that affect me as a citizen, there needs to be a broader conversation to thinking about future technologies. And so I just want to hearken that technology is going to be a key part of addressing some of the city finances that we have in our city budget process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for your presentation today. We appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Our final delegation is Alana Phillips, here in person with us, speaking to items one through four, six through ten, and twelve and thirteen. There'll be five minutes on the clock. Alana did register before noon yesterday, but we just needed clarification on which items she was speaking to, and that's why it's not posted on the proceedings. Welcome.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Madam Speaker, Administration. I didn't, wasn't able to get a printout of all of the items due to some of the problems within our city to allow indiscriminate access to technology, et cetera, et cetera. So, or protection for citizens to retain or obtain, be able to get recompense. So I didn't mark down number one, item number one. So we'll just go right into item number two. And I have here on my quick notes, as I thought I could speak to all of them at one time. So we'll go for the report administrative, the annuel sur les services en français. I do know that going to university and trying to take engineering and take French and Japanese and Chinese at the same time, it's very difficult to get all of your faculty information in the different languages. So that's a problem. So if we could allow our students to have access to the curriculum in the different languages, that obviously would be better. And to have those tutorial services available so that we're not just learning how to have coffee while the other students are actually learning about engineering. So, oh, sorry, that was just having access to the French language. And so number two with the grant processes. Again, if we can allow for our community services to not have to deal with the homelessness issue, then our grant processes can be a little more egal. And the reconciliation. I'm not sure how we can do reconciliation if we don't have an indiscriminate administration that allows people to have access to a resume system. I had mentioned before in stating a employment, an education employment and income security administration that allows people to do tasks, education tasks, have all of our labors onto a system that literally provides us a resume so that if somebody's volunteering extra, they still can have as much food as somebody who's getting paid for, for twelve-hour shifts a day or what have you. So it, it provides a little bit more equality for pay and for access to reconcili, or to leisure and recreation activities. And the open data, that I'm also promoting a building, an administrative building that allows people to have their data accessible, maybe through a glass partition, but to be able to have health records and all these records that people need. So you're not running around trying to get on the bus and trying to get to this place and that place. And people in poverty have a hard time. It's, it's probably ninety-nine percent harder than somebody who can just hop in a car and go to office and, or you get on a phone or, you know, go to the computer. So to have a building that has a lot of that data, so people can just get the data that they need to do insurance forms or, you know, retrieve information. And that's secure, that they can't touch the, the form, so it's not, so. And then number five, reducing the deficit through eliminating homelessness economies, of course, upgrading the essential services. Excuse me. And then just want to go to item number six with the asphalt, asphaltic concrete. I'd like to have more information about, more education on the microtechnologies so that we can infill concrete as opposed to ripping out streets. And when we're ripping out streets, which should be upgrading our infrastructure for the next hundred years with the blue-green systems, we are coming up to the dirty thirties. So it's imperative that we save ninety-nine percent of our water. So all, including repairing. We should be using microtechnology to clean up our rail tracks, to build housing, to fix the bridges, to add around like Arlington Bridge, to do the transit construction for upgrading our hydro lines. So that brings me to number seven. Where are we? So the tax increments for people in poverty, there's no property owning. But if we have the housing faculties, and that's another thing with recon, oh, there we go.
Thank you, Alana. Thank you, Alana, for your presentation. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we wish you a good day.
Thank you.
We'll now move into reports of the Executive Policy Committee. Okay, and I will note that item six was laid over from the last council meeting. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Then I would move, introduce item six and, of the report, and move adoption of consent agenda, item six.
Thank you. Mr., Councilor Mays?
Slight crossing of wires here. I would like one more meeting to lay that over. Have not had the chance to talk to the residents there. And this is an attempt to, this was something that Councillor Gillingham did some years ago to invoke the pavement of the lane, which can be, can be controversial, as I've discovered, and I, I think he did too. So if, also, we'll have some more information on the much-loved, on the fourplexes by December ninth or so, and our council meetings after that. So that would be useful to have a little more knowledge in hand when I meet with the residents. So if I can request one more-
So Councilor Mays is moving layover. See the mayor nodding. I can call the question on that. Or, sorry, is there, are there any other speakers? Okay, I'll call the question all in favor. Laid over to the next meeting of council, and that's carried. Mr. Mayor, the next report?
Thank you. I introduce the next report then, report on November thirteenth, and move adoption of consent agenda, items one through thirteen.
One is the twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty-two annual reports on French-language services. Ten, establishment of a tri-level agreement inner-city revitalization. Councilor Reedie? Is that seen? Okay, no others? Okay, I'll call the question on two through nine, eleven through thirteen. All in favor? Contrary? Carried. Mr. Clerk.
Item one, twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two annual reports on French-language services.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, would, do you wish to introduce the item?
I'll take you. I'll wait to hear from Councilor Lard.
Thank you. Councilor Lard?
Yes, I'll take the opportunity to speak French related to this report. Alors, j'aimerais, je voulais parler de ce rapport parce qu'il, il indique qu'il y a des, du travail à faire au niveau des services en français à la ville de Winnipeg, en particulier. Dans le sommaire ou le rapport exécutif, le sommaire exécutif, on voit que il y a un problème de rétention d'employés qui peuvent parler le français. Alors, c'est, je pense, la plus grande préoccupation du rapport. Je sais que c'est difficile présentement de recruter du personnel dans tous les secteurs, dans tous les, dans tous, tous les grandes compagnies. Puis que le français, c'est un, c'est un acquis qui, qui normalement est accompagné d'une possibilité de, de pouvoir faire un salaire qui est plus élevé. Alors, je voulais, je voulais parler de ce rapport avec, le mettre en évidence avec mes, mes collègues au conseil. C'est logique de penser que si on livre des services aux résidents réels qui ont le droit des services en français dans les deux langues officielles, c'est logique de penser qu'on puisse desservir tous les résidents de Winnipeg en français. Et en particulier, si les services sont centralisés, alors si on a un service de police, si on a un service de zonage, c'est logique de penser que ça serait assez facile de créer les positions nécessaires afin que chaque département qui a affaire avec le public puisse offrir des services dans les deux langues officielles. Je note aussi que le rapport mentionne que dans plusieurs secteurs, malheureusement pas dans le secteur de municipalité, il y a beaucoup de financement fédéral pour encourager les services en français dans les minorités, dans les communautés où il y a des minorités linguistiques dans le, dans notre pays bilingue. Alors, par exemple, dans les milieux où il y a beaucoup de français, mais pas beaucoup d'anglais. Dans notre cas, il y a beaucoup d'anglais, beaucoup moins de français. Alors, moi, j'ai commencé à discuter avec des organismes représentatifs, dont la Société de la Francophonie Manitobane, l'Association des Municipalités Bilingues du Manitoba. J'aimerais remercier, madame la présidente, mes collègues, le conseil Brian Mays, d'avoir, de, de, d'être notre représentant du conseil pour les services en français. J'aimerais aussi remercier le conseil Jason Schreier d'avoir accepté d'être le représentant à l'association municipal, l'association des municipalités bilingues du Manitoba. Et puis, je voulais bien par l'entremise de ce rapport avec le conseil en général. Et par l'entremise, j'espère, madame la présidente, de mes collègues, Schreier et Mays, qu'on puisse augmenter ou faire plus de lobbying au niveau du gouvernement fédéral, en particulier, pour, pour aller chercher des fonds qui pourraient, pourrait être un levier pour trouver ce manque à gagner entre ceux qui parlent le français, qui normalement peuvent faire toutes autres choses étant égal, un salaire plus élevé, vous demandez plus de bénéfices. Ça serait vraiment une façon de faire avancer plus rapidement les choses, les services en français à Winnipeg. Je peux partager avec le conseil municipal mon expérience comme francophone au Manitoba, hors de la municipalité, hors du gouvernement, est très riche puisqu'il y a beaucoup d'organismes au Manitoba qui sont financés par le fédéral. Certains d'entre eux ont du financement de la province du Manitoba. Et puis, on peut vivre assez aisément en français au niveau organisationnel. Mais c'est, c'est plus difficile de vivre en français avec ce gouvernement. Alors, il me semble qu'il y a un problème si le financement vers les organismes crée une situation où les résidents puissent pleinement participer dans la société, mais qu'on n'a pas un financement corollaire qui vient du gouvernement fédéral de la province pour qu'on puisse profiter du même niveau de service, de, d'être, de profiter de, de service qui est égal à quelqu'un qui parle une autre langue officielle. Et puis, en particulier, je pense aux néo-canadiens. Alors, celui qui, ces personnes qui viennent à Winnipeg s'attendent que le Canada est un pays, un pays bilingue. Puis, on se découvre que c'est difficile de faire affaire avec leur gouvernement en français. Alors, je pense que j'ai vu, madame la présidente, par votre entremise, au maire, j'ai vu que le maire a dit, est d'accord avec moi qu'on peut faire, qu'on peut faire mieux, plus qu'on, plus qu'on fait présentement. Je paraphrase ce que j'ai cru comprendre qu'il a dit aux médias. Mais j'aimerais remercier le conseil pour le rappui. On a maintenant deux autres, deux nouveaux représentants au niveau des associations francophones. Moi, mon vote est toujours là pour les services en français. Et puis, je pense que je le dois à ma communauté à francophone de parler de ce rapport et puis parler des, des défis qui sont, qui sont mis en évidence dans ce rapport. Puis aussi mettre en évidence qu'il y a eu des améliorations. On a un meilleur site web. La bibliothèque a fait un excellent travail au niveau de l'engagement avec la communauté francophone. Il y a des, il y a des bonnes histoires là-dedans. Puis de l'autre côté, c'est à la francophonie manitobane, demander au genre de, mais s'il vous plaît choisir l'option en français parce que dans certains cas, les chiffres étaient vraiment pas, pas en faveur ou les chiffres étaient très bas au niveau de l'adhésion à certains services. Alors, sur ça, je vais, je vais vous laisser. Je sais qu'on a une grande journée aujourd'hui, mais je voulais, je voulais parler parce que je, je croyais que c'était important la part des résidents de Saint-Méni-Fass qui parlent français et aussi des résidents à l'échelle de la ville de Winnipeg. Alors merci, madame la présidente, merci au conseil.
Thank you. Councilor Lard, Councilor Mays?
Thank you, madame présidente. Mostly in English today. But I want to thank Councilor Lard, who has served for, I believe, ten, his first ten years here on council was the liaison. I seem to do this once every ten years, and it's my, it's my turn. And so I'm doing it again, and I'm doing it for this year. So thank you to Councilor Lard, who's really done a lot to promote awareness. We've come a long way from that state where we were some years ago, where someone pointed out that the translation on the bus that was allegedly French was actually just gibberish of computer-generated placeholder. And no one ever went back and checked the placeholder to see if it was actually French. So we've come, I think, a fair way from that. We've seen the hiring of our coordinator, Ms. Young, when, when Mayor Bowman first got into office. So more work to be done, certainly. But I mean, just as a small step, when Councilor Lard first got here, we, we had the traduction at Riel Community Committee. We, we didn't have it at council. And Councilor Lard said something like, forget that. So that's why we have had for the last decade or so translation services available at council meetings. So some steps, seemingly small but important, I think. It's, it's, I mean, compared to when I was growing up, certainly the south end of the city, same retaliary, you hear French far more often. It's much more welcome. So thank you to Councilor Lard for the work he's put in, Councilor Schreier, Councilor Rollins, I've heard to speak French many times here. So I think we've come, we've come part of the way, and we, we need to keep, to keep moving forward. I remember when I, when I asked Councillor then, Councillor Van Dal, a question in French, there was much excitement because he responded in French. And this had not been done. We've had four or five councillors speaking French, asking questions back and forth here. So a lot accomplished, a lot more work to be done. But thank you to Councilor Lard for, for his work on, what's your usual term, langue, langue de molière?
Thank you. Councilor Schreier?
Merci beaucoup, madame présidente de la chambre. Dans ce cas-ci, je parle aussi non seulement de la langue de molière, mais moi je dis toujours la langue de Molgate, qui était le défi fédéral, ben, le chef du parti libéral ici au Manitoba et un francophone, franc manitobain. Et aussi, en ce point, à un certain point, le président du Sénat. Durant l'époque de Jean Chrétien, je crois, il y avait ça. Dans ce cas-ci, je vois le, au moins un des thèmes que Monsieur Lard considère comme le défi qu'on a ici dans la ville, c'est le défi de garder nos employés bilingues dans leur service bilingue à cause des salaires. Alors, on a toujours le, le défi éternel de trouver le financement approprié. Alors, il a dit que, il a mentionné, permet des beaucoup de choses dans ces huit minutes, le défi et le concept, l'idée de chercher le financement aussi du niveau fédéral. Et moi, je dirais dans ce point-ci, spécifiquement ce, ce dont je parle, dans ce cas-ci, que moi, je crois que ce serait très approprié d'essayer de trouver le financement fédéral pour ces programmes aussi, pour ces projets. Lorsque, c'est l'accord de la bilinguisme ici au Canada, je sais que si on considère le, le fait, Manitoba, indépendant du fait canadien, du fait fédéral, que il est, l'Europe est le destiné, le destiné du Manitoba d'être bilingue. Mais si on considère la constitution canadienne et appuyée par les jugements juridiques au niveau fédéral et provincial, que- niveau fédéral et provincial, que oui, c'est la constitution qui est fédérale canadienne qui directe, qui donne l'esprit de nos défis ici pour appuyer, pour soutenir nos services bilingues, nos services francophones. Et c'est pourquoi que j'appuie aussi, que ça serait très approprié de trouver l'appui et le financement du niveau fédéral dans ce cas-ci. Merci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to close on the item.
Merci, madame la présidente. Je remercie le conseiller Lard de ses commentaires. And I agree with him that we do need to continue to do better in our French language services and look forward to the ongoing work of our staff. So with that, I'd ask you to call the question on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Item 10, Mr. Clark.
Item 10, establishment of a tri-level agreement in her city revitalization.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, to introduce the item, followed by councillor Gilroy.
Thank you. I'll wait to hear from my colleague, Madam Speaker, noting the time.
Thank you. Councillor Gilroy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise, I know that this is kind of receiving this report as information. I am taking the mayor on his word that he will be working with councillor Edie and I on moving forward with some of the work that really needs to happen in our core areas. And Madam Speaker, this is about looking at tri-level funding and maybe trying to grab some of the funding that is already there and kind of filtering that down into the core area. When we look back at the core area initiative back in the 1990s, Madam Speaker, it was a wonderful initiative and it really helped deal with some of the issues we were having within the core area. And since that initiative has been done with, we're really seeing the negative impacts within the core area. And what we want to do is really bring down some of the levels of funding from other levels of government that is really needed to do the work that we need to do within the core areas. Councillor Edie and I maybe proposed instead of, councillor Edie actually proposed this at one of the meetings, is that maybe we take a deeper dive and have something come back to council. So it wasn't just a blank state that we want to try level funding, really do a kind of an in-depth review on some of the things that the city is doing now. Is it working? Is it not working? And really working with community stakeholders, Madam Speaker, councillor Edie and I as two reps that maybe could work on behalf of the mayor and one of his staff to take on a little bit of this work in the backgrounds and come back to council with what we could request. And some of that might be stuff that the province is already working on, but just really navigating kind of the systems that we have with the different levels of government, having an ask that makes sense. The proactive cleanups in parks is one that, you know, we could be talking about underneath this. We know that youth crime has really gone up in the city. We know that we have a lot of youth that are involved in gangs. We could be making sure that there's funding through different levels of government to ensure that there's programmings in the area where we have youth. We could be looking at maybe new areas in the city that have a higher level of needs that, you know, that were taking place in the 90s. I know that in councillor Schreier's area in Elmwood, there might be some need. I think councillor Luke's talked about areas in her ward. We can kind of be reviewing some of that, Madam Speaker, and really taking a deep dive on some of the kind of grassroots issues that we could be proactive on instead of reactive, Madam Speaker. So we know right now the city spends a lot of money in terms of our policing, in terms of fire, and there could be things that we could be doing in order to improve those numbers. And also too, Madam Speaker, improving the physical, social and economic barriers within disadvantaged areas will strengthen the economic growth for the entire city. And it would also align with council's strategic plan. So one of the concerns, Madam Speaker, within some of these core areas is we have many businesses that are looking at closing due to the safety factors within those communities. We don't want vacant buildings sitting there aligning these streets. We know how vital these businesses are to the, within the local economy within the core areas. And so we really need to establish an umbrella type of services that really looks at recreation, Madam Speaker, but also within the business community, how do we keep businesses within those communities, to look at the housing stock, Madam Speaker. We have much more vacant buildings than before. Under the core area initiative, they were able to reduce those numbers. So we would be looking at trying to reduce the number of vacant buildings, Madam Speaker, and hopefully improve the housing stock within areas where some of those, where we know we need to house some people, that could be affordable housing for people, Madam Speaker. So there are things that we can learn from the core area initiative back in the 90s, revamp it to today and look at the funding, what we're funding here at the city, is it still making sense? Could there be other areas we should be focusing on? And also looking at how the different levels of government can help support us. Madam Speaker, we know that oftentimes we get asked to deal with the issues of encampments, which really is other levels of government that really need to take a part in that. However, we're the level of government people come to. So I think it makes sense, Madam Speaker, that we do this deep dive with our community organizations that are on the ground doing this work and really coming up with something. It would come before council, before it goes anywhere, Madam Speaker. So council would have an opportunity to look at this and see if this is also their wishes. So it's just kind of doing that deeper dive that councillor Edie and I would like to do on behalf of council and kind of making a report to council on where, you know, a tri-level agreement would make sense, what areas the city could be doing that makes sense, that fits within our strategic plan, Madam Speaker, that fits within our Winnipeg document. And really making sure that we're holding other levels of government accountable for the work they need to do, Madam Speaker, within the core area, which we are not seeing. We're not seeing those investments, Madam Speaker, from other levels of government. So we need to be proactive here. We're seeing our youth crime rates go up and I think this is a way for us to really deal with the problem. And so I wanted to take the time to say this because I don't think it gets enough time at council, so I'm taking my 10 minutes here today. But hopefully the mayor will look at this as we move forward and see that there is a need. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, councillor Gilroy. We do have other speakers on the item, but I do want to recess this meeting at this time. We have a, we're going to adjourn the council meeting. We're going to reconvene after we finish a special council meeting that we have to get back into, the one that had taken place two days ago. Okay? So we'll take a recess now. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene our council meeting of November 21st, 2024. We are on item 10 of the report of the Executive Policy Committee dated November 13th. Councillor Edie, your opportunity to address council.
Yeah, I'm going to address council, Madam Speaker, on report item number 10. I will be voting to receive this report as information, a motion that essentially the mayor, Madam Speaker, has agreed behind the scenes, we're going to be empowered to do some work with some support from policy staff in his office to undertake, I would call it more of a, well, more of a consultation with community groups first, talk to various levels of government people in terms of possibilities, in terms of, well, resolving the social, economic and physical decay, I'll call it, in these areas. And Madam Speaker, my colleague councillor Gilroy, you know, expressed herself quite well. You know, we have two business improvement zones in my ward, for example, the North End Biz on Main Street from the underpass to basically St. John's Park and on Selkirk Avenue from Main to Arlington, which just also happened to be part of those corridors we were talking about. And hopefully giving the right to certain things will expediate some building there. But Madam Speaker, the building and renewal are encouraging business to operate on these streets in those areas, Madam Speaker. It's not going to happen unless we can resolve, we can build the physical ability for a business to open up there and somewhere there, but really what we have is social and economic issues in that area as well as all around the inner city, including councillor Santos, councillor Gilroy, and to some degree councillors Alard's area, councillor Alard and councillor Schreier's area, some parts. And then of course, as was mentioned, there has, over the years, there's, what's developed is, an older neighborhood is struggling over Waverly West area there. And I remember when they built those, well, I was a teenager when they built them and actually so was the councillor for the area. And Madam Speaker, we have to get at the issue. So what I will say about this, just, there's a bunch of underlying problems. The previous core area initiative in the 90s, but there was also a predecessor, that was core area initiative too, there was one in the 80s as well. And part of their progress and part of that kind of thing was, it was about the social and economic as well as the physical. The problem we have with the older neighborhoods and the physical, we have people who can't afford to renovate their homes. We have people who, for example, if there's sewer breaks or their water main breaks on their side, they don't have the money to fix it. So what happens is they end up, they can't even live in it, it becomes vacant and derelict. That's one underlying issue. The province actually, up until 2016, had a program where they could help out people who don't have the money to pay the, what is now like to redo your sewer, up to our sewer main is somewhere around 30,000 or something range now. It's quite a bit of money, Madam Speaker. So when, back when I first started, it was somewhere around 10,000, 12,000 dollars. But there used to be an emergency program that the province ran. So we can have those dialogues and I think that's what's important. But we're going to do that through being empowered by the mayor and we're going to come back with ideas that get at the underlying problem. Because we right now as a city are doing a lot of stuff dealing with the repercussions, the surface part, but we really aren't doing anything to really deal with the underlying problem. So that's what I'm hoping that councillor Gilroy and I will be able to bring back to the mayor and that the mayor will bring that to council. So I'll leave it at that. We probably still got a longer day. And so that's why I'm okay with moving ahead like this. Well, I should mention, Madam Speaker, we're going to have to work quickly, I think. I'll give you one example of why we need to work quickly. So 366 Church, we've been working on for months, my office with the residents, the public service and things, and it's going into tax sale, but everything's so slow, Madam Speaker, and the residents who live immediately around there, it's going to burn, it's going to burn, it's going to burn. And guess what? Two days ago, it burnt. And it, I don't know what was left in that building, but whoever owned it before was hoarding stuff in there. It wasn't a house, it was a building that was a drugstore and then a not-for-profit organization's building and then it became a private, just a single person ownership. And really, we got to get at the underlying problem so that we can move quicker, Madam Speaker. And because this is about people's safety and health in these neighborhoods. And that particular one, that's not William White. Where William White, we have people speaking out, a residents association that does that. In the St. John's neighborhood, it's starting to go that way, as Dufferin and William White. And you know, these are the kind of things we need to get at soon enough so that our inner city is a better place for people to live, where they want to buy houses, where they want to live and do that. And unless we start moving on it, these projects, the corridor thing, it's not necessarily the whole solution to Selkirk Avenue or Main Street. Because still, you have to have people who want to live in these places. You have to have people who feel safe in these places. You have to have all this stuff. So we need to work towards that. Anyway, the mayor is going to empower us to do that and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Mr. Mayor to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank councillors Gilroy and Edie for their work so far. I want to thank them for the meeting we had and yes, they're right, I will have one of my staff members be working with them to provide some support. Really the goal here is to identify areas within the city where we can look at ways to target these areas with a strategy for some economic, physical and social improvement, removing some of the barriers as well, just to improve these areas in all ways. So looking forward to the work and the discussion and ultimately coming back to council with some ideas. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll call the question on item 10. All in favor? Contrary, carried. We have one motion, motion three, that's been circulated, moved by councillor Orliko, seconded by councillor Edie. It's regarding funding agreements with other levels of government and third parties. It'll be an automatic referral to the Executive Policy Committee. Bylaws, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I move that bylaw number 86, 2024, be read a first time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number 86 of 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
I move that the following bylaws be read a second time, bylaw number 115, 2024, bylaw number 119, 2024, bylaw number 120, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaws numbered 115 of 2024, 119 of 2024 and 120 of 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
I move the bylaws number 115, 2024, 119, 2024 and 120, 2024 be read a third time and that the same be passed in order to be signed and sealed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
I move that the following bylaws be read a first time, bylaw number 127, 2024, 128, bylaw number 128, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaws numbered 127 of 2024 and 128 of 2024.
I move that bylaws number 127, 2024 and 128, 2024 be read a second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaws numbered 127 of 2024 and 128 of 2024.
I move that the rule be suspended, that bylaws number 127, 2024, 128, 2024 be read a third time and that the same be passed in order to be signed and sealed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Now I have a question period for the mayor. Any questions? Councillor Mays.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I had provided notice to mayor's office a few days ago of this question or perhaps this line of questioning. There is, there has been for some years a desire to do more than simply flare the methane at the Brady Road site. It is good that we started flaring back in 2013 under former Mayor Cates. It saves the equivalent of roughly the carbon dioxide emissions of 20,000 cars a year, give or take depending on how much methane you flare. But we can do better if we reuse the methane. There's a program, the acronym here is RNG, renewed natural gas. So you clean the methane and put it back into the natural gas pipeline for sale. This allows you to take less natural gas out of the ground and is better for the environment. gas out of the ground and is better for the environment. The years go by, the years run like rabbits, and here we are, years later, still debating, still trying to get this thing up and built. So the question is, given that the private sector partner here, IGRS, says it will build the facility and operate the facility, and will make revenue from the facility for the climate change reserve that Counselor Alard set up, where are we on this? Why has there not been a deal come forward for us to ratify?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank the council for the question, and for providing advance notice of the question. It allowed me to kind of get some information on the latest status of this matter. So, I know the council has, for years, been working on this matter as well. So, and understands that a key component of the renewed natural gas project is having the city and the province jointly agree to the amendments of the 2020-12 funding agreement for the sale of renewed natural gas. And there has been a lot of progress, and particularly in recent months, but as of November the 8th, the province was still reviewing that agreement. I note that the last project meeting between the city and the province, the province initiated, indicated, pardon me, that they're working to have an amended agreement done by the end of this year, by the end of 2024. So let's hope that that, that they're on track with that. Parallel to these discussions, the city staff is working closely with the developer of the renewed natural gas facility to finalize a draft partnership agreement, and the goal is to begin construction in 2025. And certainly, as we have updates on this, we will bring them to council and let councillors know about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Second question?
I feel like for the past year, city staff have been saying it's on the minister's desk, blithely referring to the provincial minister of environment, who says it isn't on her desk. So can the mayor undertake that if we don't have something, a deal in place for council to vote on by end of December, can he please personally contact the minister so we can see where this might be? He's correct in saying this requires city and provincial cooperation to amend the 2012 agreement. But at some point, we've got to get this nailed down. So if we don't have something by the end of '24 negotiated, can he please undertake to contact the appropriate provincial officials?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I will do that.
Counselor Edie?
Yes, thank, oh yeah. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to preface before I put the question, Madam Speaker, in the, well, I would call it the distant past now, the city of Winnipeg had a video camera bylaw enforcement program pilot that was targeting people, vehicles coming into an area and dumping garbage, bulk waste on to city property, as well as on private properties. And that pilot program was somewhat successful. It did start to deter these, well, I'll call them bylaw violators, with dumping, with the bad attitude that they should dump their garbage in our inner cities. And anyway, the program was really discontinued. It was using technology that was very expensive in the past, but today, that technology is much cheaper. And I'm wondering if the mayor recalls it, and if he'd be willing to utilize this as another measure to, to complement the work that we are doing trying to clean up garbage in our inner city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, I want to thank the council for the question. As I recall, actually, Counselor Edie was really, in many ways, spearheaded that initiative. I think it was a good initiative. I thought a bear of force of good fruit in deterring, or at least helping us identify the problem areas. And, you know, we've said this before around this council chamber, there are certain councillors who represent wards that are disproportionately negatively impacted by illegal dumping. Counselor Edie, Counselor Gilroy, Counselor Santos, parts of Counselor Rollins, I'm sure there is others as well. I know Counselor Dobson had an issue out on Sturgeon Road for a while. And so, I think we've got, coming up, we have a motion I see here that may be talking about that looks at that. It'll go to community services, I think. I certainly look forward to having a discussion on that, where we can find ways, innovative ways, that can help curb this problem and protect the area residents from, you know, illegal dumping in their area. I'm absolutely open to the discussion. I look forward to looking into this further.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions. Next is the Standing Policy Committee on Public Works. Counselor Luke's the chair?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move items two and three and pull item one.
Thank you. I'll call the question on item three. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary carried? Item one, Mr. Clerk?
Item one, primary transit network communications and promotional plan.
Thank you. Counselor Luke's to introduce this item?
Sure. So I just want to bring this communication and promotional plan to the attention of everyone here today. This is Transit's presentation on what they want to do, the initiatives they want to undertake to promote and talk about the new routes for Transit. So what I ask them to do also is in January, to have two sessions for councillors over the lunch hour. We'll work it between budget meetings, I guess, but to have two presentations specifically on the community organization toolkit. So a toolkit, we're not going to get the ta-da version, we're going to get that here. This is what we, we'd like to present. Is there anything else, councillors, you'd like to see in the toolkit for your, your community groups and your residents that will help you communicate this? So it's not a ta-da, here's the toolkit. It's what's your input, councillors? Because everyone communicates to their residents, onto their community groups differently in their wards, different platforms, different this, different that. So I, I'm highly encouraging you to come to this, because I tell you, I'm the only one here that's done the transit flip, and you're going to have three main questions. I like the bus on the route, I don't like the bus on my street, or I like the bus on the street and I don't want to transfer, or I like the transfer. So there's, and then, and then the question is, how do I find my route, right? So, it's like, I can't stress this enough, because it will consume you when this route flip occurs with phone calls and questions and time. The more you're informed on this, and I'm doing everything we can with Transit to make sure you're informed on this, but you'll all have unique questions. So, read through this, look at it. In January, make sure you come to the one or, one or both sessions and hear what everyone else has to ask, and think about how it's going to work for you, give your input, and then we're going to hope for the best, right? So I just want to bring this to your attention. Be aware of it. EAs will be included too, yes. Oh no, EAs will totally be included. You see, we've got a little snow thing going down too, on the new snow map coming up, and EAs are invited to that too. So, absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Gilroy? Okay. Go to Counselor Mays.
Perhaps in closing, Counselor Luke's can speak to this. So we clearly have a transit master plan that's worked out. We know D-Day is June 29th. We know all that. We must know where the transit stops are going by now. The work was to be done. In fact, it says the work was concluded in September. It says that. And yet, and yet, we wait for the map that says it's 800 meters walkable distance from every transit stop on a frequent, undefined as of yet frequent transit route. That's going to be important for the mapping. That's the map we've been waiting for in terms of the fourplex debate. In November of '23, we're told, it'll be done by the summer of '24. It's November. We don't have it. I was told, a meeting or so ago by the staff, that we'd have it by December. I hope we have it by December. But clearly, the work is done. We know where the bus stops are. So, can, I, it's still unclear to me if this is a planning staff or transit staff. I suspect it's planning staff, but I don't know if Counselor Luke's can shed any light on, when are we going to get the map that's going to show 800 meters walking distance from each bus stop on frequent transit routes?
Thank you. Counselor Luke's?
So, if we don't have it in December, I'm not saying we're not, but for sure we'll have it in January. I know that there has been a lot of changes within, yeah, I guess this isn't question period, really.
Yeah, just a second, Counselor Luke.
Oh, when I close.
Yeah, just before you, yeah, answer that.
It's a long day.
Any further speakers? Yeah, Counselor Verwadi. Yeah, different methods to reach meetings. So we're in a different meeting now. Counselor Verwadi?
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the transit staff for the work they've done in anticipation for this very big change. I think we're probably under anticipating the number of calls and changes that we'll be hearing from our constituents. The one thing that I don't see a budget for, and don't see mentioned in their plans, is I do have a lot of seniors that use the bus. They're not particularly tech savvy in all cases. They don't necessarily have PCs and handheld smartphones. I think for a first round, it maybe makes sense to do a round of bus route schedules like they used to have in printed form. That'd be my only thought in terms of a piece that's maybe missing. But again, I don't know if we need to do that on an ongoing basis. But again, the bus that goes on Henderson Highway isn't going to go to Polo Park anymore. It's going to go through the Exchange District and to Pembina Highway. So it'd be nice to have some printed schedules, I think, for the changeover.
Thank you. Counselor Chambers?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As I sit on Public Works as well, and listen to the changes that Transit is proposing with respect to the spine and feeder, I note from our last session that we talked about the plan and strategy to disseminate all of the changes, or, well, all of the changes that will be occurring to people's transit schedules. One of the things that was, that came across is the fact that we, as councillors, have a role to play and a responsibility to our constituents by disseminating this information and using our social media channels, our newsletters, our emails, whatever we can to disseminate this information, whether or not it's us actually disseminating the information, or pointing them in the right direction where all of this information is contained. But we, as councillors, have that responsibility. Yes, there's going to be printed formats. Yes, there's going to be electronic formats. Yes, there's going to be some, some radio or TV advertising. But again, we have the pulse of our constituents. We have the ability, and again, some of the cultural groups that we often, you know, whether it's the Indo-Canadian community, or the Filipino community, or, or what have you, we have the responsibility to reach out to them and make sure that all this information is provided to them, so that they can get on their way in using our public transportation. So I just want to put that out there. Again, in listening to what Transit has provided us in terms of their dissemination plan, it does fall a little bit short in terms of, again, the role that we play as councillors in getting this information out to them. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Counselor Chambers. Any further speakers? Counselor Luke's to close?
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely right, Counselor Chambers. And there will be calls, there will be lots of calls, and 311 will, you know, we're talking with 311 on how they'll be ramped up. That'll happen in July, but it'll also happen in September, because in July, a lot of people will just go to the lake, or go, you know, they're not, won't be on the bus. But come September, expect another wave. So I'd say, honestly, clear your schedules for the flip and just be available. And really understand, the department's got a new app that they're going to be bringing out also. So there'll be a lot of different tools, but if you can get well-versed in it, or your EAs can get well-versed in it, it's going to be a big time suck, but this is the biggest change that we've ever done for Transit. So, prepare yourself.
Thank you. I'll call the question on that item. Item one, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary carried? Mr. Clerk?
Item two, Winnipeg Transit Plus policy eligibility.
Counselor Luke's, followed by Counselor Edie?
I'll listen to Counselor Edie first and then comment.
Thank you. Counselor Edie?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Actually, my first opportunity to participate, participate with my colleagues on the Public Works Committee, had this report on there, and I fully support the recommendation that we made. But the reason I pulled it to speak to it is subsequent to our committee doing that, the disability community, the advocates came out and were quite concerned that we weren't dealing with the criteria and the problem in which we had a lack of certain types of professional occupational therapists and whatever, to undertake qualifying people under the existing criteria. The criteria does have to be looked at and be changed, and which was part of what we're requesting. Counselor Gilroy and I had moved a motion in regards to that as well. But the Transit Plus Administration, Transit Administration was talking about, they've been implementing a lot of different things as time are going along. They're working at having the right equipment, at the right, for the right person, depending on what your disability, your disability is, in order to facilitate the independence of persons with disabilities to get out there and do what they have to do at times. And over time, Transit Plus, I just, I think council has heard me speak about this before. I've worked on this issue and many others over the decades. I really became civically involved. Handy Transit and other issues were always part of that. And, and really, all of our department services that we provide are provided to persons with disabilities as well. And Transit Plus is essential for people to be independent and to be out there. And over time, we've also seen that, and it slowly happened to me. Yeah, I'm totally blind, but, you know, at 64, Madam Speaker, I got a sore back right now because I was overdoing the dancing and stuff like that. And your ability, your ability, your ability tends to regress, I guess you'd call it, over time. And a lot of people who are seniors, they don't want to say they have a disability. But we do know with the new transit system that we were, we were just talking about, it's going to be implemented. There's more walking and transferring that's going to need to be done. And looking at the criteria for a person to be registered with Transit Plus to utilize that service, it's got to change. And it takes a really extensive review. It's my understanding that the service is, and people have concern with the service hiring a private, private firm or whatever, private contractors to undertake the occupational therapist assessment and stuff. And I understand some of the issues behind that. But, you know, in the distant past with Handy Transit, a lot of the qualification was from your doctor, who was, was separate from the system. And so the doctor would say, yes, this person should be able to use Handy Transit because they have these limitations, and they need to use it, Madam Speaker. So, so I understand the concern, but I believe that Transit Plus is working really hard at trying to meet that service. And it's, since the 1990s, I have to say, Transit Plus has increased immensely, immense increase in the amount of people, in the cost, in delivering the service that every, you know, the people have a right to. And, you know, and I've spoken about having a right, but taking responsibility. I never used Handy Transit because there were people who used wheelchairs who have no choice, whereas I do have an ability to get, I still do. But for those who have really no choice, this stuff is so important, so important. And so, we do need to move as quickly as we can dealing with this. And I can't remember when they said they were coming back, June, I think, and our chairperson can, can explain it. But I just wanted to explain why I'm voting this way, so that the persons with disabilities out there here, that, you know, I'm trying to keep your back. I'm a city councillor now, and trying to make sure things happen. And I think we're pushing forward as best we can. And yes, the demand is, you know, we, we do need to be... know, we do need to be as expedient as we can. So, but I will be supporting this as we go. And the assessment of people meeting that criteria as it stands today, Transit Plus is working hard at meeting those obligations. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Rollins. Councilor Luchs to close?
Sure. So, yes, this was a motion brought forward. We had good discussions with Transit in regards to assessing, you know, the assessment process. They had a backlog. They got caught up. I think they've got 26 left to do. They notified me with. They have Transit Plus to exactly what Councilor Edie's saying. Transit Plus has done a complete 180 in the challenges that they faced, I'd say since I've been here. He's been here longer, so he knows longer. But they're doing incredible work. They've got incredibly positive feedback for the work that they've been doing. The new software to allow bookings on different platforms and to optimize the vehicles that are being used has proven to be extremely effective. So I just, I want to thank Teresa Platt and her team. They are doing an outstanding job. And like I said, the software is having some requirements that they, they need to enter and to work through that they didn't have to work through before, but it's coming together. We're getting a lot of positive feedback. We're not getting the calls that we got a few years ago, so it's very positive. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the question on item two. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Now have question period under this committee. Any questions for the Chair? Seeing none, next is the Standing Policy Committee on Finance. There's no reports today, no bylaws, no motions. Let's get right into question period. Any questions for Councilor Bowdy, our Chair? Following is the Standing Policy Committee on Property and Development. Councilor Rollins on the report dated November 8.
Thank you. To the Standing Policy Committee, I'd like to introduce all the reports and move adoption of the consent agenda, item one to 10.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Item one.
I'll call the question. Item one's pulled. I'll call the question on two through 10. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Mr. Clerk, item one?
Portage and Main intersection at grade opening and decommissioning of the concourse.
Thank you. Councilor Rollins to introduce the item?
Thank you. Substantively, this is an extension of time for 180 days. And, you know, in some cases, I think it is, you know, well received insofar as some of the businesses in the concourse felt a little destabilized when we introduced the ad-grade vision. And I want to thank the downtown biz and for their engagement of each and every one of the businesses downtown, including the ones that are served and reside in, underneath, underground in Portage and Main. This is a difficult project. There, we need to have a guiding vision of the renewal of infrastructure. And we, and when this public service came to ask for an extension, the request was understood by me. And so here it is. I'll introduce it that way, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Wyatt.
Yes, I stood this down. I just want to, I realize it's part of study and it's supportive, but I think the crucial thing here to say is that the decommissioning of the concourse, it should be stated that the consequences would be, I think, quite severe to mainly the shops of Winnipeg Square. I know it has been stated by the Mayor's Office that we, the cost of maintaining the concourse, I think the number was a million dollars a year. The question would be, what would be the impact of the loss of all the various shops and business on the lower level of the Winnipeg Square? And I think that's a real situation that we have to contend with, that the concourse's decommissioning would have a dramatic effect, I think, on that, those businesses, as well as their assessed values at the very least. And that though it may cost us a million dollars, I'm not sure if that's correct or not, of the concourse or to maintain it here, or run it, or both. But the loss of the assessment values with the, the impact of the loss of the concourse on the shops of Winnipeg Square, I just want to put on the record, is something we've got to be very conscious of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councilor Rollins to close? Okay. All in favor of item one? Contrary, that's carried. Now move on to bylaws. Councilor Rollins?
Madam Speaker, the following bylaws be read a second time. Bylaw number 132, 2024. Bylaw number 133, 2024. Bylaw number 134, 2024. Bylaw number 135, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried?
Bylaws numbered 132 of 2024, 133 of 2024, 134 of 2024, and 135 of 2024.
Madam Speaker?
Yes?
In terms of second and third regings, I'll move that the following bylaws be read a second time. Bylaw number 38, 2023.
Councilor Wyatt?
I'll put on number 38, 2023.
And if Councilor Wyatt could state his conflict, Madam Speaker?
The conflict, Councilor Wyatt, is?
Yeah, to do jury.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilor Rollins?
Madam Speaker, for the purposes, now I'll separate out number 38 in both motions here. So I'll move bylaws be read a second time. Bylaw number 38, 2023. So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried?
Bylaw number 38 of 2023.
And I'll move that bylaw number 38, 2023 be read a third time and that same be passed in order to be signed and sealed, Madam Speaker?
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried?
Okay.
Just give a moment. Thank you. Councilor Rollins?
I'll move that the following bylaws be read a second time. Bylaw number 85, 2024. Bylaw number 107, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried?
Bylaw number 85 of 2024 and 107 of 2024.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll move that bylaw number 85, 2024, and 107, 2024 be read a third time and the same be passed in order to be signed and sealed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Any questions for this committee? For Councilor Rollins, Councilor Mays?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't expect an answer today. And given the hour, I'll try and be brief. The, if, again, it refers to the map that we are awaiting and have been awaiting for some months, that is to show us the walking distance of 800 meters from bus stops on frequent transit routes. The definition of frequent that we voted on here in July of 2023 is this somewhat cryptic, frequent route stops with and then a less than or a plus 10 minutes headway or routes with less than or equals 10 minutes headway. I'm not even sure what less than plus actually even means, but could we get some clarity? It looks to me like what we said was you're supposed to be getting buses roughly every 10 minutes or less throughout the day presumably. That's what we, that's what we voted on. So if the Chair in due course could get back to us on what definition of frequent is being used. Obviously, there are some routes, such as the one that runs along Dunkirk, Dakota, my word, Councilor Chambers's word, it'll go all the way down to Aldgate on Dakota. I am going to be surprised if that's running every 10 minutes throughout the day, but that would perhaps be a pleasant surprise. So if Councilor Rollins can get back to us with what the definition of frequent is and whether it corresponds with the definition of frequent that we were presented as councillors in July of 2023.
Thank you, Councilor Rollins.
Madam Speaker, I view this as so encouraging because just as we finished a major milestone, us as a hearing body doing zoning amendments, Councilor Mays is moving to anticipate just this next phase with an enthusiasm and unbridled energy that I can't muster today. So when I first read this question, I, it made me excited for the next steps coming so swiftly. Right now, and I'm not even joking, right now, we are, you know, letting the department have a good rest, hopefully they're at the holiday party having fun. I'll endeavor to answer these questions. This is absolutely information that council must have prior to the next debate envisioned. And so, you know, really important questions that we have directed the administration to do, work that they are, you know, leaning into. They deserve a bit of a rest over the weekend, but we are needing to gear up again. And we know the timeline for the next phase of zoning bylaw is March, as we heard oftentimes. And so that means this council should get some briefings prior to that timeline, Madam Speaker. And I will work with the department to delineate a more transparent timeline and then get the information requirements to prepare councillors for that debate with as much rigor, if not more, given the lessons learned from bucket three.
Thank you. Councilor Mays, second question?
Thank you to Councilor Rollins for correctly identifying my enthusiasm and energy for the project. But for clarity, as we all know from the November vote of 2023, councillors are to be briefed. Community committees are to meet with staff prior to the end of 2024. Thus, we are supposed to be meeting with staff on or about December 9th to get the plan. So can we please have Councilor Rollins make best efforts to get us the map, which we thought we were getting in the summer. Whatever the map looks like, however the map is defined, let's at least get a draft map and we can then debate what, whether 800 meters has been accurately measured, whether frequent has been accurately measured. And I guess we'll decide then whether people's concerns are red tape or if there's a red tape army out there that's ready to ask some questions. So look forward to hopefully getting that December 9th, if Councilor Rollins can make efforts to get us that by December 9th.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I did misspeak. You know, the timeline certainly isn't March. And Councilor Mays is absolutely right. I know that the director, you know, was working on that communication to council, perhaps with the clerks. So we'll absolutely do that.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, or Councilor Rollins, sure?
I'm just going to follow up to Mr. Mays, Councilor Mays, regarding the question regarding the map. I guess regarding the four units as of right, that question I have is regarding, has the city of Winnipeg accepted the terms related to the Canadian Housing Infrastructure Fund that includes allowing as of right four units citywide? Can you tell me if that's happened yet or will that be happening in the future? Will we see it? I'd be interested.
Thank you. Councilor Rollins?
So I think the question was related to the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund and the requirement of the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund in, in drawing down that component funding. And so we have what council has directed with respect to rapid zoning. And the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund has quite a few requirements that has not been contemplated through the motions that we have directed. But there are some work product that depending on, for instance, the definition of designs, design catalog, there is work product to talk about in Winnipeg. But I can, I can get a more comprehensive report out to council in line with the department. Because if there was one lesson from the hearing, it is that council needs more information on the housing file to feel like we're progressing, to feel, to know where we're in line or maybe not in line, you know, to know when, where we're in line, alignment with the federal government, what more we might have ambitions for with respect to drawing down funds. I know I feel the pressure. I know the mayor does too, in terms of drawing down as much funding to Winnipeg as possible by the federal and frankly provincial government and various partnerships. So that can, that has been a source of stress and anxiety as we're, you know, nearing to a federal election, Madam Speaker. So, you know, I appreciate that councillors want to light a light on that.
Thank you. Questions? Councilor Schreier?
No, no, no.
Okay. No further questions? Thank you. That concludes question period under that committee. Next is the Standing Policy Committee on Water and Waste and the Environment. We have no reports for the committee, but we do have a notice of motion from the October meeting of council, and it's from Councilor Mays and Councilor Wyatt regarding a review of the utility dividend policy. Councilor Mays, your opportunity to introduce.
Okay. Thank you. This is not the other matter that came forward the last meeting of council, which pertained to having the Public Utility Board review water and sewer rates in the city of Winnipeg, which would sweep in under it the consideration of the dividend. So the history of the dividend, yeah, I will try and be brief here, given the hour and given that I think the motion speaks for itself, which is we should debate the dividend when we next get the next rate report, which I think the mayor is in support of. So rather than having a thundering multi-hour debate now, we can delay that until we get the next rate report and sort of see it in a context. In brief, the dividend was brought in when then Councilor Fielding was the Chair of Finance. He put in that it would be reviewed, I think at the start of each term of council. The dividend rate went from 8% of water and waste revenues up to 12% of water and waste revenues under Councilor Morantz as Finance Chair roughly 2015, 2016. Councilor Gillingham as Finance Chair presided over a reduction in that rate, to his credit, down to 11%, I believe in 2019, possibly 2020, first year of the multi-year. At that time, we were to review the dividend during the early part of the life of a council. It was missed. So I would suggest we got to debate it. Frankly, that is the whole intent. Let's debate it when we get the next rate report. There are issues here. There are financial implications. If you take $40 million out of revenue and fire it into water and waste projects, you'll get a lot more water and waste projects done, but you'll carve a 6% property tax equivalent hole into the, into the other side of the budget. So there's a balancing act here. There's a timeframe. What would we use that 40 million for? All of that should be debated in the context of the next rate report. So what we're moving today is simply that, that we review this policy whenever we get the next water and sewer rate report, which I believe is coming sometime in the near future, discussing what would the implications be if we, the city, have to go it alone.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, through you. I just, I want to thank Councilor Mays for this motion and basically his comments are, are spot on. I agree with him that we, this is to be discussed. This is to be discussed. be discussed. This is to be reviewed by council. That's what the policy states. It hasn't been done yet. It's supposed to be done soon after, I think within three months of the swearing-in of a new council. We have not done that, so it's certainly time to do that. His comments are related to the city's finances and the fact that we are very open and public about our draw on this dividend, and that we utilize it every budget so far, of the last several certainly, and that it would create a $40 million goal in the tax-supported budget. So it's not a matter of whether we'd like to reduce it. I would, you know, appreciate the opportunity if there was ways to reduce it. That comes back to the opportunity to state on record again the need for a new funding model from the province of Manitoba. And we know this. I'm certainly not the first mayor, and this is not the first council, to call for a new funding arrangement with the province of Manitoba. Successive councils and mayors have made this statement and sought this goal, sought these changes. We are working with the Association of Manitoba Municipalities right now as a city, because they too have called for a new fiscal framework from the province. We take the province at their word that in the spring, when they announce their budget, the statement was that the province will be working with municipalities of Manitoba to establish, excuse me, a new funding formula. And we will continue to hold the province to that and work with them. The discussions have been good, but as of yet, they haven't produced the formula that we are looking for and hoping for. But all that being said, yes, related to this policy, specific to the utility dividend, it does need to be discussed. It does need to be debated. And I concur with Counselor Mays' direction here to bring this forward when the water sewer rate report comes forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Edie, followed by Counselor Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Counselor Mays makes a point. Do we want to debate it now or later? But, Madam Speaker, historical discussion. Madam Speaker, I still have a problem with calling this a dividend. What it is, is a percentage tax on water rates. It's a tax, not a dividend. But also, I would note where dividends usually come from. If a corporation is deriving a number of surpluses and enough, well, they call it profit or whatever, but we call it surplus, I would point out that water and waste does also have retained earnings as a result of surpluses, not related to this so-called dividend tax, Madam Speaker. And back in the day when I debated and I voted against the 8% that the budget person, Mr. Counselor Fielding at the time, you know, this was done, for some reason, Madam Speaker, this was done in the face of, well, we don't want to raise property taxes because, oh, that'll be too controversial. People won't put up with that. But they were willing, willing to put forth this tax on water rates. Like, so Madam Speaker, when evaluating the policy, you can't help but balance and look at it because it's either-or kind of thing with the city. So, I mean, if people have a problem with raising property taxes, which we should have been doing all along for operations, because usually the so-called dividend money is to cover off operating deficits, is usually what it's being used for. Counselor Mays makes a good point about maybe utilizing it for things that are important for water and waste, like CSO or whatever it might be. And how you use that money, that's an interesting thing, Madam Speaker. But, and CSO, actually, the cost is built into the water rates, just as everybody knows. So I'm okay with the review of the policy. I don't know if I want to debate. Well, I'm not going to say anymore. I just want to point out, yeah, we need a new, back in my first term, we needed a new fiscal deal with the province. Back in, when Counselor Wyatt was first elected in 2002, we needed a new deal from the province. Well, actually, yeah, it was around there. And so, it's always an issue, right? So my issue is, if we're evaluating this policy, really, it's, yeah, we could get rid if we get more. But the reality is, we need to deal with property taxes appropriately. It's a steady, solid place for income. Yeah, affordability is a big problem all over. But you know what, Madam Speaker? My whole career so far, and prior to that, is everybody will say it's, for a lot of people, it's always hard times, Madam Speaker, always hard times. And actually, when Mayor Cates was there, the amount of money, it wasn't hard times for a lot of businesses. It wasn't a hard time for a lot of people. And even in the COVID situation, there were people making way more money, way more money than it would have if COVID never existed. So I'll just leave that all with you. Like, so when we're evaluating this and you want to talk about affordability and stuff, you know, and I'll just leave it at that. I'll be voting to proceed with this motion.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Wyatt?
Yeah, I rise. I was very happy Counselor Mays moved this, and I was able to second the motion. The matter, Madam Speaker, is very straightforward. Every other municipality in Manitoba has a Public Utility Board involved, and frankly, I think it's a good idea. I know there was strong resistance from parts of our public service to do this. Often, there was a cost associated with it. But I think it's long overdue. I think the cost of having to file before a separate body like the P U B would, well, it would simply make the requirement of this dividend that we got before us here today, something which frankly is, would allow us to deal with it and remove the dividend once and for all. So I'm glad to see that this matter is moving forward and going to be dealt with, hopefully, in the process, as they mentioned, when it comes forward. But the P U B matter that we've also moved on, this similar matter, is also going to be able to be addressed as well, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the utility dividend policy, my understanding is that the policy is pretty straightforward. It's to let the utility dividend be reviewed by council on X amount of times. I would argue that it is reviewed by council annually with the budget. We've had a chance to review it now, going on, what is it, three budget years here now that we're getting into? And there has been no suggestion of peeling back any of that dividend. I mean, if anybody around the table has $40 million in ideas, I'm open to hearing them and making some changes. But sitting in the budget process, I can tell you right now that it's a lot of difficult decisions and, you know, people living paycheck to paycheck, or not even being able to afford to live, I don't know that, for whatever reason, eliminating the dividend, as my council colleague had said, would do them any benefit. But in regards to the policy, all in favor of reviewing it, and open to hearing how some of my council colleagues, especially those that are a part of this motion, would propose to looking at $40 million in operating.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Duncan. With that, Counselor Mays to close?
Okay, thank you. Good debate on whether we should have a debate. We'll have a debate, I suspect. That's, yes, touche. Yeah, some good points made. With respect to Counselor Duncan, I don't think we can say the budget counts as the review, because, I mean, we said during a budget, let's have a review of this every four years. I mean, why would you do that as part of a budget back in 2019? So we'll have a debate about it. It isn't explicitly saying, send it to the P U B. Maybe that's where we'll land as part of our review. We'll see where that ends up. But Counselor Edie makes, there are a number of valid points made, which were, I've made them myself. You find $40 million, basically. And Counselor Edie makes the valid point, though, that this doesn't relate with property tax increases. I mean, my answer to Counselor Duncan would be, well, probably we need to phase this out, and that'll mean a higher property tax increase for a period of multiple years. But despite what the Free Press said in a recent editorial that property tax increases fall harder on lower-income families, that's just not true in the Winnipeg sense, because we have a flat rate with a mill rate. It applies against the value of your property. So if you have a $1 million property, you pay more in property taxes than if you have a $400,000 property, and that home pays more than if you have a $200,000 property. So it is our only measure, really, of any sort of progressive taxation that we have that lever. Water rates are not, I mean, there's an argument, and people have made it here, well, the water and sewer rates are disproportionately onerous on low income. Everyone doesn't need to use water and sewer services. There is some evidence that wealthier homeowners use more water, almost certainly pool usage or multiple washrooms. It would depend. So you can debate that, but I think, in terms of Counselor Edie's argument, I think it is almost certainly true that if you got rid of the dividend and recovered that through property taxes, more of that burden would fall on higher-income or at least higher-valued properties, not necessarily higher income. So that's a good debate to be had. What would we do with the $40 million? That's also a good debate. Personally, I'd like to see some of that go into combined sewer, as Counselor Edie referenced. We don't debt-finance that. We've always done that on a pay-as-you-go basis. So you need more in the water and sewer rates to get going on that. So we're done in 2047, not 2097. So that's the debate we should be having at a future date. So I look forward to approving this, and then we can have a, maybe a debate that would actually deal with the dividend and options. And it is, to be fair to the mayor, he ran on a certain property tax pledge, as did his predecessor. He's trying to keep to that pledge, but that comes with certain trade-offs. So we'll have to have that debate. But thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Counselor Mays. I'll call the question on the notice of motion. All in favor? Contrary? And that's carried. Okay, question period under this committee. That's for Counselor Duncan, our chair. Any questions? Seeing none?
Madam Speaker, I don't think we will pass 6:00 PM. It's only a couple of minutes away.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Speaker, all in favor? Contrary? That's carried. Next standing committee is Committee on Community Services.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to introduce the reports and move adoption of the consent agenda items one to five, because item number six has an amending motion.
Thank you. I'll call the question on one through five. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? That's carried. Amending motion one, going with item six, has been moved by Counselor Gilroy, seconded by Counselor Santos, and is regarding, regarding item six. It's an amending motion, that the item be sent to the budget process. Mr. Clerk?
Item six, proactive cleanup of needle debris and weapons in city parks.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Santos to introduce the item?
Yes. So just to kind of quickly highlight, I want to thank the mover, Counselor Gilroy, working with myself to make an amendment to the recommendation of EPC as well as the Standing Policy Committee. I think the conversation with the province of Manitoba is still going to be had to put in place a needle exchange program with the city of Winnipeg to encourage a partnership on how needles can be picked up. But in the meantime, Counselor Gilroy had presented a really good argument on issues with other sharps, such as glass and knives that are currently not being picked up. And so I think that conversation can continue to be had with this amending motion to refer the suggestions within the report to the 2025 budget process.
Thank you. Counselor Gilroy, do you wish to introduce the amendment?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Speaker. This, you know, this, I think everyone's heard me talk about the issue about being proactive in our parks and cleaning it up. A lot of the debate came over needles, but what I'm really actually, the needles actually have improved. There are, I guess there are groups picking them up. But what we are seeing really a lot of is actually actual weapons, knives and different kind of homemade weapons, lots of glass that are kind of right underneath slides and stuff, condoms and other really other hygienic garbage that is really not healthy for kids to be playing in. And of course, there is some drug paraphernalia that if kids touch it, it's very, very, could be very dangerous. And so that's what I'm kind of hoping to achieve here. And of course, we would need some funding, which is recognized in the report. And so that's why I'm hoping it could go to the budget working group for further review. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Edie, then Schreier?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, this report came up at my last community services meeting. And so what I'm understanding here is, what's being referred to the budget is the dollar values related to cleanup, not recommendation number two, which I believe the mayor and everybody would like to see proceed, because while needles may not be so much of an issue in the parks at the moment, what I find very interesting is that you have community groups who have volunteers picking up needles. And when we look at a garbage program that we have, the private sector company that goes by, they won't pick up the garbage on the back lane unless all the needles are removed. So I always have this problem, and why is it okay for volunteers to go and pick up needles? We can't hire workers to deal with needles? Like, really? There's a procedure to deal with needles? It's not that difficult, Madam Speaker? We have our green teams do it all the time. Anyway, in the business improvement zones. So anyway, I just, I like the idea of referring it to, but, you know, we should be asking ourselves, you know, hey, when my kids were playing around a play structure, you know, there used to be public service workers, they clean out that gravel or whatever material is being used around those play structures. Like, that should be just being done right now. That's part of the maintenance of a park. So you know what? If public works is saying they don't have money to deal with and clean that up, you know, the budget working group needs to find the money. And I'm happy to hear that Counselor Santos is supportive of that. I don't know that we should be getting community groups and establish some kind of volunteer program. People should be paid to clean that up? That's how we dealt with it, Madam Speaker? Anyway, the exchange, giving a value to needles for people to get needles. We heard from somebody who's dealing with addiction, who used needles, who is trying to stay away from that, presented on it. And we really do need the Winnipeg Regional Health Authority to have an exchange, because then those needles, hopefully, will be traded in rather than discarded. And believe me, there's still a lot of discarded needles. There's a lot of them, Madam Speaker. So I think recommendation two is really important. That's not what's being referred to the budget. Recommendation two, I'm hoping the mayor will, or public service will communicate the urgency that there, to the addicts, that there's some kind of value put on the needles so that they'll bring them back. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edie. Next is Counselor Schreier.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The Chair of Community Services is hoping we'd all be briefed. It's been such a long few days here, as we discuss such important issues. But this is a really important issue. And every one of us here know that these needles can pop up almost anywhere in the city, in any of our wards. In some city and any of our wards, in some wards more than others and in some neighborhoods more than others. And literally, I clean up needles right on my street, right across the street, 30 seconds from my house, not just mine, but my neighbors. And I do encourage, I do support, I do financially allocate, I do allocate funds for a volunteer program on essentially a weekly basis, at least during the warmer months of the year, at least for two-thirds of the year, in different incarnations of patrols in my neighborhood in Elmwood, including, especially through the Chalmers David Renewal Corporation, including the new Unity Walk. Oh yeah, we do pick up needles on a regular, weekly basis. But I'm just going to say this, what we're dealing here today, this discussion, this motion is, I consider part of an ongoing process in which we're looking for new answers, new processes because of an issue that is so much larger than it has ever been. And so one issue that's really important, despite the fact that we do work with volunteers at the Chalmers David Renewal Corporation, I provide food just to encourage volunteerism. So you come there, you eat, and then we go for our walks, and we, one of the things we do is, is needle pickup. But in that process, there's an element of safety and a protocol of safety. So you know, as Counsel Eadie was making the point, this is kind of serious stuff, and having a, having a protocol of safety is important. We use gloves and we use certain kinds of boxes on our, or belt, on our belt, in which we put in the sharps. And that's how we have to do it. So I'm really in favor of any discussion and motion that's, you know, going to take this seriously, and I want to thank those counselors here for bringing this forward as we have to, you know, bring in and look for new processes, protocols, and policies, for dealing with a really serious issue because we're talking about they can be on the street, they can be in the park. We know teachers, teachers are calling my office saying, I don't want to go to the park anymore with my students. I can't take my primary students to the park anymore. So this isn't a joke. This is very serious, and I thank all counselors and anyone for serious input as we move, as we try to go forward on some aspects of solution, including the how we manage picking up of needles and other unsafe, unsafe objects. I do have concerns as well, not trying to talk too long, this is really serious where in my, where I live, and in terms of safety for those involved in this, including those that might be incent, you know, motivated to start picking up stuff to make some money out of it, meanwhile, they can get hurt, and these things are really important. But this is part of the important discussion, and I thank those involved in getting this here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Gilroy, do you wish to close on your amending motion? Counselor Santos?
Yeah, so just to, want to thank my council colleagues who made some really good points and comments. They have been heard and hope the Budget Working Group has also heard those comments as they deliberate the report in front of us. And just to clarify, one of my council colleagues had mentioned that the recommendations about the Province of Manitoba be requested to discuss the needle exchange program. It is my understanding with this amending motion, it specifically states the recommendation of the Standing Policy Committee on Community Services be referred. So those recommendations that came out of the community services will be forwarded to the 2025 budget process. So I had the help from the clerks to develop that wording and ensure that that would still be occurring. But other than that, I just wanted to clarify that, and thanks my council colleagues for their support on this. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, I'll call the question on amending motion one. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried, and the main item six is amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? That's carried. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, now move on to question period. Any questions for Counsel Gilroy? Oh, we do have motion two, actually. Yes, and I got that, thank you. We have, yeah. We have motion two, though, before us, moved by Counsel Eadie, seconded by Counsel Gilroy. It's regarding the video, a video camera program, so it's an automatic referral to the Standing Committee. Okay. And now on to question period for our Chair, Counsel Santos. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Next is the Governance Committee of Council. Counsel Eadie, will you take the chair so I can introduce the report?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I am taking the chair.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Speaker, I will move the report and move adoption of the Consent Agenda item one to three.
One to three?
Okay. Counsel, oh, sorry.
Did somebody step those down? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, so each individual will be debated then. Madam Speaker will, I'm in the chair, you'll be speaking to it. Is it Mr. or Ms. Clerk right now? Sorry.
Mr. Prince Lu.
Mr. Prince Lu, could you please introduce report? What is report item number one?
Report one, Committee Meetings, Free Parking and Refreshments.
All right. I guess it's Speaker Sharma?
Yes, just a moment here.
Introduce.
Yes, yes, thank you. I'll introduce item one. The topic was free parking and refreshments here at City Hall, and this motion was referred to the Governance Committee for consideration, Mr. Deputy Speaker. The committee reviewed the motion and discussed options, and we're recommending to council that the public service be directed to have beverage and snack vending machines right here at City Hall in the lower level, and this will provide onsite options for the public to utilize while attending meetings and visiting City Hall. They will be installed at no cost to the city. So that was our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Who stood that down?
Counsel Wyatt.
Counselor Wyatt, your turn to speak.
I rise to thank the Governance Committee for moving on part of the motion. The other part was on the parking, but I'll take half the pie versus the whole pie today. So that's good news, and I think it's a very good improvement for the public that comes here sometimes in late meetings and don't have access. We don't have that Grace Cafe anymore, and so I think this was a good, positive movement. I wanted to like, thank the Speaker and members of the Governance Committee for the approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wyatt. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this report?
Counselor Schreier.
Counselor Schreier, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. I was glad to second this. It was kind of obvious, given the way things have evolved out of having community committees, that part of the evolution was people had to come far away from their houses, and the process is going to be longer for people, and it used to be shorter. Parking issues, the inconvenience of coming downtown, it never used to be that way. And on that basis, what can we do to facilitate? Now, Counsel Wyatt said, you know, half a pie. But speaking of pie, my concern, quite frankly, as soon as I heard it, my concern immediately was that, you know, a snack machine, is this going to be full of, you know, high carbohydrate foods kind of thing? And so this isn't a great solution, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not sure how we solve this. I would like to have that, I would like to see the administration deal, have conversation in terms of what can we do for some things that are lower carbohydrate, maybe higher protein, something, because that's, a snack can make it worse for people. I don't need to go into a kind of state of society where we've evolved into already in terms of, you know, offering, encouraging, pushing carb- high carbohydrates on people instead of real food. And if this is meant to be a substitute for meals, it's the opposite, and that's my concern. I just got to state that kind of thing because, well, it's not my truth, it's the reality of our society in this day and age. I just got to get that off my chest because, well, that's just, that's just a fact of things. So I'm not sure to what extent this is a, this is a solution. I know it's an attempt, so it's some sort of compromise, and on that basis, I'm willing to support that, but I don't think this conversation's over kind of thing. So I just got to, just got to let you know. Don't be surprised when people talk about the inadequacy of putting sugar in a machine down in the basement and calling it a solution.
Thank you, Counsel Schreier, for speaking to the issue. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Counsel Orliko.
Yeah, just, that's fine. Counsel Schreier is fine with that comment. We never said what's going to go into the vending machine. He's made some comments, he'd like to be a little more, I don't know, organic, locally grown, I don't know what. But yeah, absolutely, I understand what he's saying. We can look into, we can look into not just putting chips and pop down there, we can see there's better, more nutritious items that could go into the sheet as well. So I think, I don't think that's a problem at all.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Orliko, for expressing your opinion. Nobody else want, does anybody else want to speak?
Counsel Duncan.
Counsel Duncan.
I just wanted to bring, thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Speaker. I just wanted to bring to the public's attention, we just spent probably about five minutes speaking about vending machines, and we have passed unanimously without discussion at all, tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars today in other items without any discussion. Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Speaker.
All right. Matt, hang on.
Can't tell you the amount of money that we spend as a society in just Manitoba when it comes to diabetes.
Okay, you don't have a point of order. That's not a point of order. Please sit down, Mr. Schreier. And please, I heard enough, I cannot hear to do my job. That's enough. Is there anybody who wants to speak to the motion? No? To close, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. I think we need to be respectful of all items before council. I want to thank Counsel Wyatt for his comments for bringing this forward. Counsel Schreier is correct. There'll be more discussion maybe in the future on this. We did touch on some things with respect to this at the Governance Committee, but there were some future ideas, so perhaps we will be coming back with something more. With that, Mr. Deputy Speaker, please call the question.
I shall call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed?
Aye.
Did you say you're opposed?
I did.
Would you like to be recorded?
Yes, I would.
Counsel Duncan would be recorded as opposed. So the motion passes. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Report item two, Mr. Prince Lu.
Item two, Council Motion Naming Standards.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. This item was a council motion referred to the Governance Committee of Council. The committee reviewed the motion with the mover, which was Counsel Schreier, who's also a member of the Governance Committee currently. We decided to recommend that the public service be directed to maintain the same subject line when submitting an administrative report on motions that originate at council or committees. It's been noted that in some cases, when a report is submitted to committee, it contains a different subject line than the original motion that directed the report. So this can be confusing, it can be misleading, so really just simply maintaining a consistent subject line for these reports ensure that these matters are easy to find, even in our Demus system. So I, I.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I ask that you support the recommendation before us. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Pardon me for interrupting you. I think Counsel Wyatt, you stood this down?
I stood it down in case Counsel Schreier wanted to speak.
Would you like, because what?
Well, fine.
So you don't want to speak to it?
I'll speak to it.
Oh, Counsel Schreier, please go ahead.
In terms of the naming standards, yeah, I was, well, this was actually Counsel Wyatt's idea, but I was seconding one. He seconded this one. And the issue is, I've made my point in the governance meeting, this is sort of the way Counsel Wyatt wanted to put it, there was a point to it. My point was, as I made my point in governance, was that I've seen confusion over a report item and then when there's, as the clerks have written it, and then when it comes to a report from the administration on that, it has a different title. And I've noticed this to some sort of pattern, which is why I could, I could second this motion. We have made the point in governance, we, you know, I've talked with the clerks, and we will be watching in terms of any disconnect between the item of a report, the name of a report item from Standing Committee, a committee or council, from what the clerks term it and what later the administration terms it in terms of the report back. And that's fine with me, and we'll go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Schreier. Does anybody else wish to speak? No? Madam Speaker to close?
Call the question, please. Thank you.
All those in favor? Is anybody opposed? That is carried unanimously. Report item three, Mr. Prince Lu.
Item three, City of Winnipeg Charter Amendment, Community Committees.
Thank you. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. This item was also a council motion referred to the Governance Committee of Council. The committee reviewed the motion as recommending that it be received as information. Reference to community committees in the former City of Winnipeg Act was removed in the 1990s. However, the city organizational bylaw does establish community committees and their authority. Having this authority in bylaw provides greater flexibility to council to change the authority delegated to it. I'm asking that, what the committee came up with is, the change is really unnecessary at this time, so we're receiving this as information. Thank you.
Okay. Was this stood down by Counsel Wyatt again?
Mr. Speaker, in the essence of time, and it's been a long day for everybody, a couple days or so, I'm going to just, I thank the Speaker for the explanation, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wyatt. Anybody else wish to speak to?
Yeah.
Okay, Counsel Schreier.
And I think, I'm just going to say this because it's going to help with understanding some clarification. When it came to the original obligation of to have community committees, that was a function of charter. I learned this in the governance meeting. That was a function of our charter from the province. It made it unnecessary by a change of the charter in the 90s. Having said that, we maintain them by virtue of choice of the City of Winnipeg as bylaws, and that's why we have them. I think it's important for people to know that if they have got any concern over these things, and thus, we brought this to Governance Committee, I don't think we wasted anybody's time on that either. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Schreier. Anybody else wish to speak? Call the question, Madam Speaker?
Yes, thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? That is carried. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bylaws. She's pulling up, you're just pulling up your, all right.
The bylaws, I'll move that the bylaw 129 of 2024 be read a first time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? That is carried.
Bylaw number 129 of 2024.
I'll move that bylaw 129 of 2024 be read a second time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That is carried.
Bylaw number 129 of 2024.
I'll move that the rule be suspended and bylaw number 129 of 2024 be read a third time and that the same be passed and ordered to be signed and sealed.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? That is carried. Mr. Clerk, I'm not sure what the procedure is in regards to the final report of debate.
I'll take the chair back, Mr. Deputy Speaker.
Will you? Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On to the final report here. Next item is the, is an investigation report from the Acting Integrity Commissioner, Jamie Pytel, on a complaint made pursuant to the Members of Council Code of Conduct by law 19 of 2018. As per the procedure bylaw, a member of council who's the subject of an investigation report from the Integrity Commissioner is deemed to have a conflict of interest in respect to the matter and must not participate in debate nor vote on any motion concerning the report. They are, however, permitted to speak to council and delegation with respect to the matter. Counsel Wyatt, do you wish to come to the podium to address counsel?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wish to take this opportunity to briefly, to respond briefly to the findings of the Integrity Commissioner of the City of Edmonton, Jamie Pytel, who is acting as our Integrity Commissioner. Ms. Pytel has found the following, which is in contention in my opinion, that A, I was disrespectful and harassed the complainant, Mr. Jack, via media article and found in breach of the code of conduct; B, that my comments in the CBC media article were contr- breach of the code of conduct; B, that my comments in the CBC media article were contrary to the expectation of the code of conduct; C, that it was unfair and inappropriate for me to personally attack, which she contends, and to try to interfere with Mr. Jack's duties and to threaten his employment; D, to correct misinformation that the complainant was engaged in delay tactics regarding legal action on the Marquette matter, namely the appeal of the court decision; E, commitment or request to treat city staff with respect and professionalism going forward. In response to A, B, and C, at no point did I harass or disrespect Mr. Jack, nor did I personally attack Mr. Jack and attempt to interfere with his job or threaten his employment. As a member of this elected council, I believe we have a duty to hold the CAO accountable for his or her actions. As members of council are aware, the city has been now found in breach of both city policies and planning regulation, and that has led to a successful claim against the city with damages being applied by a court of law for $5 million, which, as you know, is being appealed to the cost of tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' dollars and illegal expenses. I suggest to you that in any corporate organization other than the City of Winnipeg, an employer employees who cause a damage claim against their employer, for example, a private corporation in this case, significant damages, and in the case of the city, the near equivalent of a 1% property tax increase, that the corporation would either terminate employment of said employee or employees, or at the very least, they would place the employer or employees on administrative leave without pay. In the City of Winnipeg, neither has occurred even to this present day. I called on then the CAO to be accountable for the failure, to act accordingly, I felt, and I called on his resignation for failing to do so. As a member of council, that is my right. Also, as I also in theory participate in the hiring of the CAO. In theory, because we know, in our strong mayor model, it's really the mayor who truly controls both the hiring, suspension, and the firing of any CAO. Therefore, Ms. Pytelle's contention that I'm in a position of authority is frankly absurd within the actual workings of our City of Winnipeg strong mayor model. She chose to assume that the Winnipeg City Council operates the same as the Edmonton City Council, where in Edmonton, the mayor there regularly loses votes on the floor of council. This is an important point, as her arguments that due to my position gives me authority over the CAO is actually false in our existing operating structure here in the City of Winnipeg. Therefore, the concept that somehow I could threaten Mr. Jack's employment is false. That D, correction of the misinformation that the complainant, Mr. Jack, was engaged in delay tactics by recommending an appeal to the court decision, with a court decision. Pertaining to this matter, I am prepared to acknowledge a correction, that the appeal was not, was not, and is not a delay tactic, but a right the City of Winnipeg has. This is an acknowledgement of the need, of the need to correct my media statement, but in no way should it be interpreted as an apology. And E, to treat city staff with respect professionalism in the future. This statement by Ms. Pytelle is being made with the contention that my holding our CAO accountable was somehow disrespectful. That is false, as my call to hold him accountable on this matter, which I had the courage to publicly speak to, was done so regarding his position as CAO and not that as the individual himself, Mr. Jack. It should be pointed out that both EPC members of council and non-EPC members of council privately shared their thoughts on the matter, on this matter, both before and after the news article appeared in the CBC, that were similar to mine, if not exactly the same. In other words, what I said publicly is what some members of council other than myself are stating privately. Yet the one member of council who has had the courage to speak out, to share these real concerns with the public, is now the member of council who is being subject to potential reprimand here today. Therefore, I have responded to Ms. Pytelle's contentions. The City of Winnipeg Charter Act, which she is not familiar with, supersedes the code of conduct insofar as the need for members of council to hold the CAO accountable. And as a non-member of EPC and as a councillor versus the mayor of Winnipeg, my ability to do, to hold the CAO accountable is truly limited greatly, and where acting and speaking directly to media is often the only recourse. Therefore, I did nothing wrong, and I therefore refuse to apologize based on what I have said here to you today. I take the words of Ms. Jamie Pytelle very seriously, including her statement and the use of the word harassment, and wish to inform this council that the matter is being reviewed by my own legal counsel with the potential that I may seek an apology from Ms. Pytelle and/or damages for said statement. With that in mind, I respectfully request that the matter be laid over today to the December meeting of council for your consideration, as the discussions with my legal counsel is taking place presently. In light of the fact that I am discussing the matter with legal counsel, I've been advised to decline any questions on this matter here today and to simply make the statement which I have just made. Thank you very much.
Counsel Wyatt, just to reiterate, you are not taking any questions. There are questions from counsel, but you're not taking them today.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question, Counsel Gilroy, you said for the administration?
Yeah, just because I have raised this at governance.
Yeah, just who are you putting the question to?
Probably to our, to our --
To the clerk?
To the clerk.
Yeah. We do have the Integrity Commissioner, Jamie Pytelle, on the line.
Okay.
We do.
Just to the clerk, though, like, or to you, ma'am chair, like, I guess, like --
Could rise in the chamber, please.
Oh, sure, yes, yeah. I guess my question would be, is like, how do we deal with these matters if somebody does not, does not do what the Integrity Commissioner has asked them to do? And I think that we, as a council, need to have, have a decision made from governance on how to move forward with this. So I guess that's what I would like.
Counsel Gilroy, thank you for that.
Okay.
That's not a question directed to anyone right at the moment?
Yeah. But there's something that I think we need to know and understand for this meeting.
Yes, you can speak with, you can ask the Integrity Commissioner, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, I would point out that our own code of conduct that we voted on, adopted as a council, states in there the obligations and options that are available to council when it comes to how to deal with this matter. If, if a councillor does not respond to or act in line with, for lack of a better word, the recommendations of Integrity Commissioner, then council has the option and opportunity to act in accordance with our own council code of conduct. So at some point here, we do have the Integrity Commissioner on line, but I'll be looking to introduce a many motion, Madam Speaker, at some point here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, we do have Jamie Pytelle on the line, the Acting Integrity Commissioner, and questions can be posed to her in order to clarify the complaints process or the process followed in this specific investigation. That's what you can pose questions on. Okay? Yes, Counsel Duncan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I understand that the councillor didn't want to take questions. However, would there not be an opportunity for the questions that were going to be asked of him to be posed? Maybe I could see clarification on that?
No, I don't see any reason. There's no one answering the questions.
I appreciate that, Madam Speaker. However, when somebody chooses to decline answering a question, that means the question is being posed. Thank you.
We're going to move on to questions of the Integrity Commissioner at this point. Okay, Counsel Edie? I have a speaker's list already. Okay, Counsel Gilroy, did you want to pose your question to the Integrity Commissioner?
Um, you know what? I'll let others speak, because I think the mayor just answered my question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Counsel Mays and Counsel Rollins.
A two-part question, not to the Integrity Commissioner. Is, when is a motion for layover in order? And the second part of that question would be, is one able to lay this over to an unspecified date, that date being after the decision of the matter to a Court of Appeal in the litigation that's all over this file, the Parkerland? After that decision is made by the Court of Appeal?
There is a motion that's going to be circulated. First, we're going to have questions from the, to the Integrity Commissioner.
Is that a motion to lay it over?
I'll let the mayor speak to that. He does have a motion. It'll be circulated. It's essentially not dealing with the item today, I understand. Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Okay, let's take the questions. Any questions to the Integrity Commissioner? No. Okay, thank you. Okay, Counsel Edie?
I have a question for the Acting Integrity Commissioner. Madam Speaker, I would just, the Acting Integrity Commissioner did evaluate and put forth where the violations were. I'm wondering, how did, how did the Acting Integrity Commissioner determine what kind of power a council member of City Winnipeg has in terms of what Counsel Wyatt is being found by the Integrity Commissioner to be guilty of?
Ms. Pytelle, have you heard the question?
Yes, I've heard the question. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Edie. I think the way that Counsel Wyatt has depicted my comments on power is slightly different than what I said in my report. My report mentions a power differential just in terms of being a councillor versus being a member of the staff and what you can and cannot say publicly as a staff member. And it's well-established in Integrity Commissioner and Code of Conduct reports across the country that, and I take, and I take this into account, that councillors, whether they have the higher, the ability to immediately hire or fire, which I don't, I never suggested he did, they do have more power to speak publicly and, and as did Counsel Wyatt, and staff would obviously have less ability to get into a public debate with them in the media. That was the only comment that I was making about a power differential.
Thank you. Second question?
Yeah, thank you, Acting Integrity Commissioner. Please refresh our memories definition of harassment.
In my report, I mirror the language from your code of conduct, and the findings mirror that language. I'm just going to that language right now, and it talks about -- Let me just get to it. Please, my screen is frozen quite conveniently at this moment, so I can get through it. Your code of conduct is the language that I was applying. Members must not use or attempt to use their authority for the purpose of intimidating, coercing, or influencing staff with the intent of interfering with such staff duties. Members must not maliciously or falsely impugn or injure the professional or ethical reputation or the prospects of, or practice of staff, and must at all times show respect for staff's professional capacities. Members have a duty to treat members of staff without abuse, harassment, or intimidation. The definition of harassment is any behavior, whether a single incident or a course of conduct, that a reasonable person should have known would be unwelcome, and that is inappropriate, demeaning, humiliating, embarrassing, or otherwise offensive, including but non-limited to verbal or written insults, abuse, or threats, or bullying.
Thank you. Third question, Counsel Edie.
Third question, Madam Speaker. Thanks for reminding us, Acting Integrity Commissioner. So at the beginning of the definition in there, it talks about councillor's authority. Were you considering that part of the definition in terms of having authority over, like, councillors of Winnipeg have authority over our employees, who are our executive assistants? Did you utilize that authority perspective at all when determining the harassment?
So, in my view, and this is how I landed on the findings, is a council is on a member, is a member of council that, for which the complainant reports directly into council. I was concerned that the councillor was making statements to try to intimidate the CAO or city manager in terms of the steps he was taking, for instance, with the potential dismissal of an employee and using his public platform as a councillor, in that sense of the authority, right? And I say right in my report that I acknowledge that, in my view, it should have been done in private, is this kind of feedback, and that this person reports to all of council.
Thank you. Next is Counsel Gilroy? Okay. No further questions? Okay, Counsel Schreier, right.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I've never asked any member of the administration, anyone around here, to resign, ever. However, when it comes to the, and thank you for our Acting Integrity Commissioner for being here, zooming in from Edmonton, thank you very much, and to answer some questions and for your weighing in with your perspective on this. Happens to be that council votes for or against a candidate for CAO. My only real involvement is, you know, in terms of having any real obvious tangent that I can understand, influence over the CAO is only in the hiring or choosing not to hire. And when we make that vote, we can make our, we can make comments here officially on the record.
Is there a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we bring it to debate?
No, I'd like to, I'd like a question. I'd like an answer to my question.
Counsel Schreier, just to reiterate, it's a question to clarify the complaints process? Yes, which you're doing that, I believe? Or is the process followed?
That's exactly what I'm doing.
Or the process followed in the specific investigation?
CAO. Or we can choose to, to vote for or against the candidate. And so we have comments. We may, we may comment, we may talk for eight minutes. And in the process, we may say good things about the candidate, or we may say bad things. Are we allowed to do that?
Counsel Schreier, I don't know that that's the line of questioning that we should be posing here.
These candidates for their job, if we're voting against them, may we give our --
Question, please.
Our explanation? Are we allowed to give an explanation for why we choose not to vote in favor of a candidate for CAO? Yeah, it is, because those are comments about those people.
Thank you. That's not a question about process. Let's stay on task here. Counsel Rollins, followed by Counsel Alors.
Thank you for being available to council today, and it's nice to meet you virtually, and thank you for your service to the city. My question pertains to your recommendation, and in the recommendation, you outline a date that looks to be December 12th, meeting of council, for Counsel Wyatt to make an apology. It's the last paragraph, I believe, in the recommendation. Can you confirm that that would be, our next upcoming meeting is December 12th? Could you confirm that at the time of writing, that you anticipated that that would be the timing of Counsel Wyatt's apology?
Thank you, Jamie.
Yeah, the idea was to have this meeting today for council to consider, and then give Counsel Wyatt time to consider whether he would issue an apology, and if one was not forthcoming, then council would need to resume to, again, this is, this is all in council's hands. It's just a recommendation. The council may want to resume. So trying to give a timeframe. I've seen in other jurisdictions, I work not just in Edmonton, but many other ones, where this is just left open, and there's no time limit on how long the councillor has to consider issuing an apology. So that was the thinking around those timeframes, which, again, is in council's hands.
And then with respect to your report, you, you note that the respondent's comments were made in public, so a public apology for the conduct being made is appropriate. And then you outline several components of what an apology would include for council. And in particular, an acknowledgement that there was disrespect, harassment of Mike Jack, now Deputy Minister Mike Jack, in a media article that -- Jack, now Deputy Minister Mike Jack, in a media article that was found to have breached the Code of Conduct.
Counselor Rollins, is there a specific question? The report's in front of us.
Yeah.
So, we see that.
I apologize, Madam Speaker, I'm getting to the question, it's just sheer fatigue from the last three days. So, in your structure, you note, structure for the apology, and at the last, you indicate to council that should an apology not be forthcoming, that you have a further recommendation. Can you talk to that?
The typical progression in Code of Conduct sanction hearings would be to start with an apology, at least in my experience, but it's, again, it's in council's hands, and give the council an opportunity if they choose to engage in that apology. And the suggestions I make about what the content of that apology would contain are really to make sure that the apology is meaningful to the actual findings, but that apology, as long as it was acceptable to council, it's council's Code of Conduct. So, these are just recommendations. If the counselor is unwilling to apologize or accept accountability, then council may consider issuing a letter of reprimand, obviously, if they agree with the findings.
And one final question?
And the letter of reprimand, and may I say, the letter of reprimand, I would suggest would probably mirror what the suggested apology might have said.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, Counselor Rollins, if any.
Sorry, I just lost my train of thought. You point, oh, in our Code of Conduct, it points to that obstruction of the Integrity Commissioner is also, you know, problematic within our code. It is incorrect to represent a Code of Conduct that stems from the Municipal Act of our council as anything but a council publication. Is that something you would agree with?
Okay, Counselor Rollins, speaking just about the process, please, of the Integrity Commissioner and this specific investigation, that would be out of the scope. Any further questions? Counselor, Counselor Alard, then Counselor Mays.
Yes, thank you. It's specifically on the, on the, I guess, the reporting relationship between a member of council and the chief administrative officer, so I pulled some texts from the City of Winnipeg Charter.
Counselor Alard, do you have a question on process for this investigation?
Yes.
For the Integrity Commissioner?
Yes, and my apologies, I, as some of my colleagues is a little bit tired from the last few days, but, so, I'd like to, I guess the question, and perhaps it's been posed, but perhaps it was posed by the counselor who spoke earlier, but was the City of Winnipeg Charter the test of whether or not the counselor had influence on the hiring and firing? Because I, you know, from experience and from the City of Winnipeg Charter, question is, was the Winnipeg Charter used as the document to determine what the relationship was between the individual counselor and the employee, given that Executive Policy Committee supervises the C.A.O., and the mayor may suspend the C.A.O., but no regular member of council could do that, so.
Thank you. Jamie, can you speak to that?
I'm happy to answer this, and I think that what, my words are being taken and used in a different way than what's in the report. The authority, as I said earlier, talks about just generally being in the public and being able to speak to council. This is about staff working in a public office and in possibly a political office, but they might spend their entire career doing this, and the city and the public is not going to know the ins and outs of the charter, and I did look at the charter. What they will expect, or what staff should be able to expect, is that their counselors are not publicly asking for them and suggesting that they be fired, whatever the process may be. So, I didn't say that he had the ability to fire him, I said he was threatening his employment publicly and suggesting that he didn't have proper professional capabilities. And your very code says that that's offside the code expectations. I think this is meant to distract from what I actually said, which is, he's clearly in a different, on a different platform and has different authorities, and he clearly was saying something that was contrary and meant to damage the city managers, the C.A.O.'s professional capacities and how he was seen publicly, and that information would remain in the public sphere indefinitely. And if, in my view, when I made the finding, it seemed as though that language would have no meaning if something like this didn't actually mirror things like questioning somebody's professional capabilities, which is the language in your Code of Conduct. So, I think we're, the charter is being used as a distraction, and I don't think it applies here. What I was applying is the Code of Conduct, which has very clear language about how staff should be treated.
Thank you. Counselor Alard, second question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have been ruled in this chamber as having impugned motive a number of times, even though I still believe, I have not impugned motive in this chamber, because I think there's a difference between voting for oranges or voting for a bad thing.
Question, Counselor Alard?
Well, I think I heard, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I heard the, I think I heard the Integrity Commissioner speak of the intent or the reason why this argument is being raised, and I would think that might fall into the category of impugning motive. I'm just, that's what I think it actually is.
Okay, question?
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that, I don't mean to suggest that, I just want, if there's going to be questions about process, and I really want this council to understand how I arrived at my findings, and so, I'm trying to clearly say that's not how I arrived at my findings, and not suggesting motive at all, just suggesting that there may be a misinterpretation of how I arrived at my findings.
Thank you. Counselor Mays, followed by Counselor Schreier?
It is getting late. Good question by Counselor Alard. The term obstruction got used at some point. Is there some allegation here that something, that the investigation was obstructed? There was some obstruction?
Counselor Mays on process, you know, clarifying the complaints process.
How is that not a process question?
We're getting into the detail.
How is that not a process question?
Mr. Clerk?
There you go. Are you aware?
Yeah, it's the preamble. Go ahead.
In the process of investigating, was there some allegation of obstruction against Counselor Wyatt?
No.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Counselor Schreier?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. According to a decision made by an appeal court of Manitoba, which said officially that the evidence of a former C.A.O. while the C.A.O., that his dereliction of duty is nothing short of staggering. That is an official statement by an appeals court of Manitoba about a C.A.O. while he was C.A.O. Happens to be that that was able to happen over a period of years with nobody doing anything about it here. However, Counselor Wyatt asked for his resignation. He wasn't told about any integrity. His integrity at the time wasn't questioned.
Counselor Schreier, specific question about process?
Well, sure. I mean, that was the process at the time, 12 years ago.
You're questioning the findings, process?
Well, I agree with the Supreme, that was our court, that was a legal opinion. So, that is process.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
The Integrity, sorry, the Integrity Commissioner is not on trial here, right? So, this is just questions of process. So, if the council has a question related to the process, then I think you've been really instructive, Madam Speaker, very clear in managing this long meeting, and thank you, and I think your request, directions have been clear, and they should be followed. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes our questions. Thank you, Ms. Patel, for your time. Mr. Mayor, there is a motion to circulate?
Yes, yeah, please feel free to circulate the motion, then I'll wait till everyone has it, and then I'll speak to it in a moment.
It's motion four on this topic, moved by the mayor and seconded by the speaker. Mr. Clerk, would you read it into the record?
Be it resolved that the recommendation of the Integrity Commissioner be amended as follows. Amend recommendation two by deleting the words "prior to" and replacing them with "at the," and then add following new recommendation three, three, that should the respondent not issue a public apology at a council meeting, that the report be reconsidered at the December 12th, 2024 council meeting, to consider a public reprimand and/or the removal of a counselor from committee in accordance with Section 26.1v of the Members of Council Code of Conduct by Law 19-2018.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, speak to the motion.
Yes, thank you. What this is, this amending motion really is kind of spelling out in greater detail, in fact, what the Integrity Commissioner's recommendations are, and clarifying by the amending, the recommendation two by deleting the words "prior to," replacing them "at" with "at the." I think the intention is that the counselor would make a public apology at council, so we just clarified that. But then the third recommendation is really, actually what it is, it mirrors our Code of Conduct that we adopted as a council, that we agreed upon, that if, in this case, the respondent, if the counselor fails to apologize, and as a council, we have a decision to make, it's up to council. Council will make the decision as to what to do next. According to our own Code of Conduct, these are the two options that are available, I guess, or an option to do nothing, but these are the two options that are available to council, a public reprimand or removing a counselor from, the counselor from committee. I read this, probably most of us have, I read this report and take it very, very seriously, as I think we should take any Integrity Commissioner's report very seriously. I was thinking about the fact, I think around this council chamber, there's five of us, myself included, that one for another have gotten a phone call, an email from the Integrity Commissioner with instructions one way or the other. In my case, it was to remove a post that I put up because it had contravened our Code of Conduct according to the Integrity Commissioner and the Integrity Commissioner's finding. I did that. We adopted a Code of Conduct, Madam Speaker, as a council, because we truly believe we're not above scrutiny. We're not above someone looking over us and us holding one another to account, and we established Integrity Commissioner for that reason. I think it's important that we realize that in this, in the roles that we have, and I know we do realize this, permit me to point it out again, is that there is several relationships that we manage on a regular basis as council. One of the greatest, most important relationships is the relationship we have with the public service. There is a power imbalance, of course there is. That's the structure of city council and city governance. And I think it's incumbent upon us always to do our jobs with respect to others, to do our jobs with respect and integrity to others. We are an employer of about 10,000 employees. We need to be the kind of place where people want to go to work. We need to be the kind of place where people's professional credentials, experience, and integrity is respected. Now, that doesn't mean the public service, the 10,000 employees that we have are faultless, not by any stretch of the imagination. That doesn't mean that some of them are not at times perhaps underperforming, not in any way, but we do have mechanisms by which we hold the public service to account, as is part of our job. There are mechanisms to hold our C.A.O. to account, and through the C.A.O. to hold every employee in this city to account. Now, we might not think they're effective enough, then that's up to us to change. We might not think that they get to the bottom of things fast enough, that's on us to change. But I think it's important to us, in the midst of our debate, in the midst of sometimes being animated and discussing things, whether it's in this council chamber or in the public, that we govern ourselves, that we act with integrity and respect, and that we realize every time we take an action, make a comment, on the other end of that comment, on the other end of that action, is a real person with real credentials, real integrity, someone's mom, someone's dad, someone's spouse, someone's brother, someone's sister. I think from time to time, we do, that we do cross the line. I think from time to time, we don't govern ourselves, our comments and our actions, as we should. I want us to be the kind of council that works hard, holds people to account, gets the best out of our public service, but gets the best out of one another as well. And so, I think we should always take these matters very seriously. I think we owe it to the staff that works for us to provide them the support that they need, and on the other hand, to get the best out of them, to hold them accountable through the processes and mechanisms that we currently have. If we don't like the mechanisms, if we don't think they're good enough and strong enough or effectiveness to hold people accountable, then it's on us. We have the opportunity, dare I say, the obligation, to make sure that the structures are in place to hold people accountable, to get the performance that the people of Winnipeg deserve. So, I think what this motion does, I'm asking for this amendment, I'm asking for my colleague's support in this, to give our colleague the time in the next council meeting to fulfill the recommendations that the Integrity Commissioner has put forward, and then failing that, then it's on us to determine what next steps would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Rollins?
Thank you. I can't support the motion before us today, and I can't not because I disagree with the mayor's statements in terms of what the public service deserves to see. Our civil servants have a fundamental role in serving Winnipeg. They affect our orderly completion of proceedings, like we have had the last three days, it feels like this is, feels like it's been a three-day council meeting. They really affect the order and completion of our city and the business of council. When I reviewed the Integrity Commissioner report posted on November 15th, on set for today, I saw that Counselor Wyatt was to issue a public apology for publicly disrespecting and harassing Mike Jack in the media. I saw an acknowledgement of unacceptable and contrary to Code of Conduct comments that were in the media, that were unfair and appropriate, and personally attacked our former C.A.O., now Deputy Minister Mike Jack, and corrected misinformation that the C.A.O. was acting to the detriment of the city regarding a property and development legal matter, and a misunderstanding of the role of C.A.O., and that further, Counselor Wyatt needed to recommit to treating all staff with respect and professionalism. I view both the comments of November 14th that were made prior to this meeting by Counselor Wyatt in a series of media interviews he did concerning his refusal to apologize, which he repeated today, to be, to fly in the face of what the Integrity Commissioner wants us to consider here today, their recommendations, and these were all made in advance of this discussion. He wrote, he made media comments that repeated the very behaviors that were involved in the report in the media in the last few days. He made them again today. Moreover, he made, he, I think there is, that there is, in his logic, some real faults. The Integrity Commissioner recommended a timing of Wyatt's apology following the next meeting or... following the next meeting or on the December meeting of council. But given what took place in the media and taken together with Wyatt's conclusions that you can read in appendix C that is oblivious, in my opinion, to the municipal act, its requirements of the code of conduct, and their comments that he repeated again today. The, the comments, I think is important to note, is that he sees nothing wrong in continuing to defame Mike Jack and property and development staff. He repeats the very language today within appendix C that you can read of the integrity commissioner's report and in the media last week that she found to be offensive, disrespectful, threatening, and an attack on the capacities of the members of the public service. I believe that it is another contravention of the code. Not once, not twice, but three and four times. So I think actually time is of the essence because he shows no end to disrespect the public service. So I can't support the mayor's motion. In line with this, I'll ask you to consider this section that guides you, Madam Speaker, and our presiding officers on decorum in this chamber. It occurred to me, Madam Speaker, that I should get up and actually try, as a point of order, to stop the fourth time he was going to repeat the behavior from within the chamber. Because this chamber and presiding officers have direction to actually stop harassment in the chamber, to say, it is, it is a section that says cease, that the presiding officer has some flexibility to cease and desist that type of behavior that would repeat the defamation of Mike Jack, that would repeat the, the problems that lead to the finding harassment. He told us at the very first sentence.
Counselor Rollins, I can appreciate what you're saying. I cannot unilaterally decide on something like that today. We do have a report in front of us.
I'll make my point, Madam Speaker. I'm not asking, I'm trying to make the point that I don't think that this sends a message to the public service that time is of the essence when it's not once, it's not twice, it's three times and four times that someone is determined to continue the harassment according and break the code of conduct. So I do believe that we should consider that, that section nine of our procedural bylaw that contemplates harassment and ejection, should an offending member not immediately cease and desist from further acts of harassment, and I have no confidence, given what was said, that that will be ceased, that behavior will cease. I have none. And in particular, I think we should consider further action as circumstances warrant, language from section nine, to maintain order and decorum in the chamber. And that we consider that as a path to ejecting him for a month, perhaps longer, but for a month. I think there are strictures of that within, within the municipal act that does allow for ejection within the municipal act. It's not in our code. But I also would ask that we formally remove Counselor Wyatt from property development SPC in line with section 60 that is in our code. Why? Because I don't believe the behavior will cease. And it is really difficult for me to jive that this council, who has the power in the organizational meeting of council, to confer and agree.
Are you wrapping up, or did you need more time?
That any, yeah, to confer and agree because it's implicit agreement that a member who is harassing specifically pertaining to property and development, that a member of this council that is agreed for all of us, that is on the standing policy committee, I'm asking this council that we move swiftly to adjourn. I do believe the time is of the essence.
Thank you. Counselor Orliko, followed by Counselor Edie?
First of all, I want to, you know, I've been around the block for 30 years on politics now and we've had, I've had experiences with certain trustees and certain counselors. I have been brought forward in the past how to apologize to a developer, which really left a bad taste in my mouth. But I understood that in maybe in some way, with other background, what I could have said, but I can't. But it was a really hard call for me. It was a really hard call for me to apologize. The last one I did, but again, I was worried about what council would do. It was political, it was hot. So I might as well suck up my morals and my beliefs and say, you know what, I'm not going to do it. I'll also go apologize. That's what I'd been told to do. I wasn't pleased about it. I felt I was defending the neighborhood and doing what he actually asked me to do. But regardless, that time has passed. But I never had this. Never had something like this where we've already, this motion here, there is a third option we have in here, which I'm actually going to support. I'm going to support the mayor's option today. I think it's, he's trying to shoot somewhere in the middle. But it is very, it's also chilling to the counselors and all of us that either you apologize or you get this. It's like, the other option is, we don't do anything. That is an option. We don't have to take the recommendations of the integrity commissioner. I don't think I'm with that, but again, we could just say, okay, Counselor Wyatt has points. Maybe we'll give him the extension. I think that's fair. But to put it in here that if you don't do it, we're going to do these two things.
Counselor Orliko, just to clarify the motion. It's basically putting the discussion again on the table next council meeting. And that you can read that it says council.
To consider?
Consider, that's right.
But it doesn't say consider doing nothing. It says consider these two options. That's a chilling part of this thing. As a person who would be reading this, Counselor Wyatt would read this later on, he goes, well, I don't really want to apologize, but now they've chilled me out and I'm scared of what they're going to do to me later. So I'm going to do that now. It's called chilling. That's what you do. That's a very common term. I'm not saying what I choose to do, but I prefer how it's just, it gets referred over. Now, Counselor Rollins wants to go for the jugular and do what she believes in. That's fine. Sorry, what is it?
You were saying you would defame people, Counselor Rollins. That's, that's.
Okay, so again, if that's not the right, she would like to have another option on top of this, the third option. So prior to Counselor Rollins's comments, I'm back onto this one now. But I just want to point out that I feel this is a little chilling to the people that are out here. There is the option of doing nothing. I don't think that's the best option. But again, the mayor has taken a path that I think is reasonable. Let's take a break. We're all pretty tired. I know that, I believe personally though, it's, when I've done this in the past, it has worked sometimes, not all the time. But you have a progression of, you have a progression. You don't just go to the big one at the end. You have a progression of either a letter of reprimand. You hope that works because you have to respect each of us as colleagues. So I'm not saying how I'll vote because again, I may have stuck my public hearing mode. But, but again, I do find this a little bit chilling. But I also find Counselor Rollins's comments very chilling to say you do this, or you must apologize even if you don't believe in it, or this is what we're going to do to you. I don't agree with that. I think this is already a problem. So based upon what I've heard from Counselor Rollins, I'm going to be supporting the mayor's amending, amending motion.
Thank you. Counselor Orliko, Counselor Edie?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm going to rise first of all and thank the acting integrity commissioner for undertaking a very difficult evaluation of the complaint filed by Mr. Jack. Madam Speaker. So I've kind of formulated my own personal opinion so far, but I just, wow. So in my first term, I think three times I went to the media saying that the CAO must resign based on the failure of some major projects. To think that I wouldn't be allowed to offer that opinion out to the media and explain why accurately, though, Madam Speaker, accurately, without any accusations of which I note in this one, there's a false accusation that should be apologized for. And I would say that I think that the counselors should be happy that a civil suit wasn't filed for, what's the term, liable? In terms of accusing the CAO of something? I will be voting for the mayor's option because I think people really need to think this through. And we don't have to take the integrity commissioners, acting integrity commissioners at full heart to decide what should be done in it. What I was sad to hear was I didn't hear that it was an apology for accusing the CAO of doing something that was actually not in the CAO's interest, but in our, all of our interest. And I think the CAO took appropriate action. But, so I'm really concerned and the discussion about authority. And I've heard over, actually not just over the last three days, but I've heard over time, I've heard how we discuss the issue of my staff. The people who work for the city of Winnipeg, the officers are technically our staff. Because council has, well, I mean, the mayor is the chief officer. The chief officer means that they have authority over the clerk, the CFO, the auditor, the CAO. They are the boss, the chief officer. And what happens is you have an executive policy committee made up of the support team that supports that chief officer and the mayor of this city to undertake business. When I hear the word authority, I only have direct authority over my staff. And I should never be harassing my staff, ever, and have due respect. I also, as a city counselor, must have some, you know, professional respect, a level of kindness. But in my, I am able to interpret, intelligent elected person on council, where I think you should go, I'm not going to say where I'm going on this. I'm supporting the mayor's motion. But we need to keep in mind and in context, I've had to go to the media because I was ignored by the mayor, by EPC, for quite a number of years, Madam Speaker. Sometimes you can only bring your opinion to the public and the media and let them consider. But from my perspective, one shouldn't make false statements, which there was one in this which was determined and evaluated by the acting integrity commissioner. So I think we do need some time to consider what action we are going to vote to take in the case that Counselor Wyatt doesn't apologize. And I'm going to just conclude by one thing. I was found to be guilty of the Winnipeg Police Board Code of Conduct, not on a similar matter. However, I did something that was in the public interest in releasing to the media some information about the police service trying to take over half of the old exhibition grounds. And if that wasn't in the public interest for the people to know, to just all of a sudden be popped, goodbye, take off, right? So in that case, yes, it was difficult. I apologized. But I guess it was kind of a false apology because I said I would do it again. But, well, it's a different basis though, right? It was release of information that was in the public interest, but I was told I wasn't able to do that. Anyway, anyway, I'll leave it at that. It is not easy to apologize, as Counselor Orliko was referred to. For me, I did have to apologize, but it hurts. So Counselor Wyatt, I hope will come to the, he's going to review it with his lawyer, although I don't know that I'd be spending money on a lawyer. I think we're all intelligent enough to consider it. And had the apology been offered, we wouldn't be considering it December 12th with this motion from the mayor, what actions to take. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Counselor Mays?
Thank you. Very good comments by Counselor Edie, Counselor Orliko. I will support the motion. Thank you to the mayor and Counselor Sharma for putting that forward. And after all, Counselor Wyatt did request that we lay it over. So it seems to be a good way home on that to get it to the next meeting. I don't know how I would land though at that next meeting. Counselor Orliko had said, well, what if I want to take a third way? And I may want to do that. So we'll see what comes of it. There are some other things to say though. I will say, I have a degree in public administration. I was a provincial civil servant for three years. So I have, I've been on both sides. I have now been an elected official in two different levels of government for almost, almost 17 years. So I think I've seen both sides of this. There are some pretty easy breaches here when I refer to something on a live mic as an effing, and not with the word effing, with the, as a gong show, Counselor Rollins said, I think you breached the language code. Well, he was right and I apologized and got mostly favorable emails ironically after that. But no, that was easy, that was clear. But then there are the more complicated matters that we deal with, right? So how do we tackle this? We'll give Counselor Wyatt some more time to think about that. Unbelievably messy fact situation here, right? And firstly, Mike Jack isn't here anymore. Mike Jack has a new job. I view Mike Jack as a friend. I think highly of Mike Jack. I would, I wish he would have stayed on as CAO. I'll say all that. I view Counselor Wyatt as a friend. I disagree with him at least half the time, but I also get the way he operates and he makes some valid criticisms. So, but the situation at hand here, right, is litigation that resulted in a finding of fault of two city employees for either misfeasance or malfeasance. I can't remember which. I think malfeasance, or maybe it was misfeasance, pretty high standard. Counselor Wyatt saying, well, some, some action should be taken. I think he had the right to say something like that. There's nuance about what wording was used, what allegations were made. Somewhat ironic, there were some people here who didn't want Mike Jack to stick around. If you parse through old council minutes, you can probably find some pretty stern criticism of Mike Jack as CAO from some people around this table. Now, that didn't necessarily trigger a complaint and it's a complaint-based system, but it's worth noting that. Personally, I thought Mike Jack did a good job as CAO. So let's just remember that context. It's in the context of litigation where the city's on the hook for millions of dollars and less successful at appeal. There were two people found guilty of misfeasance unless that's cleared up at appeal. The other thing, frankly, and I'll say it because Counselor Orliko's name got dragged through that pretty publicly, pretty badly. No chance for him to respond. He wasn't a party. I don't think he was made aware of the people's defense where I was just doing what Counselor Orliko wanted. I might have made that defense myself if I were in the hands of, if I was in the role. in the role of a former civil servant, I might well have done that, that's your job as a defense lawyer, is throw stuff out there, so, but it was classically unfair to councillor Orliko, had no chance to defend himself, and couldn't, couldn't appeal because he wasn't a party to the whole proceeding, so, that's the underlying messy fact situation, and then we have a civil servant, former civil servant, Mr. Jack, claiming that these comments breached the code, and yet we were discussing an action where the city will be on the hook for millions of dollars due to the actions of civil servants, or in a former civil servant in one case, um, and, and those civil servants, you see the point here, it was, it's not the best, cleanest fact situation in which to allege, uh, misbehavior by councillor Wyatt. I, I am conscious of what councillor Orliko was saying too about a chilling effect, um, and councillor Edie gave some good examples, um, you know, I got an email once accidentally from somebody, I'm not sure if it was about, and another staff's in there saying, Mays always votes against infill, infill because he doesn't want complaints, and I just finished voting after a multi-hour hearing with two of my colleagues here, voting for a very contentious infill project of about ninety units at what was then Bishop Brandon and River, a decision I still stand by, so I didn't take that too well, when somebody puts that in writing that I always vote against it or words to that effect, and the apology I got was, I'm sorry you took that as criticism. So maybe councillor Wyatt can take that as a guy for the kind of apology he might want to issue, um, or, you know, we can't write the words for him, but if that's the quality of apologies we get, then yeah, it, it, it is concerning as an elected official to have that, it's concerning when you see public servants on social media saying, let's all get certain councillors to change their vote, and we need this policy changed, and we need a bridge built here, and you go, that's directly contradicting the position of the Winnipeg civil servants, you're directly telling people to come out and vote against me, or lobby against me, or try to embarrass me, because I am adopting the position of your bosses. I remember talking to Mr. Kiernan saying, what do you want me to do? Do you want me to trash you publicly? Because that's what your staff are telling the public I should do, or do you want me to back you up? That's why we need one voice from the civil service, otherwise you have that dynamic, which is completely unfair to the elected officials. Mr. Kiernan took some action, thank you to Mr. Kiernan on that. Uh, the reason why I almost broke down, well frankly, I did break down into tears when we opened the Saint Vitale Park toboggan slide, it was a four-year battle with the civil service to get that damn thing built, it was a toboggan slide, this shouldn't have taken four years, but the funding that was needed was then going to be moved to other wards, but I wasn't going to be told, and on and on it went, and no one apologized for anything, and people are pointing at the other, it's parks says it's finance, finance says it's parks, I never got an answer on that, I got, I got the money saved, luckily, councillor, then councillor Gillyham, and I think, and certainly then mayor Bowman backed me up on that, so yeah, I, we've all had battles with the civil service where frankly, we can always get complete forthright behavior, um, and we've all had to deal with that, and we've won some and we've lost some, I imagine, so councillor Wyatt's going to have to decide what he wants to do, and then if he doesn't issue some form of apology, we're going to have to decide what we have to do, uh, but I do want to echo some councillors, I mean, I've, I've had a much easier ride of it than my colleague here councillor Orliko, quite frankly, and, and it was on this particular file, so, uh, let's lay it over to the next meeting, I would agree with the mayor, and we'll have a debate then, and maybe councillor Wyatt can put something together that will resolve this, um, I, you know, it's a complaint-based system, one can't really fault, uh, Mr. Jack, I, I also want to say, it's not helpful for councillor Wyatt if he did leak, if he did provide confidential information, because Mr. Jack was, I thought, not bad at briefing us and not making us sign these ridiculous non-disclosure agreements, like we've had to do on things like the police pension, legal opinion, and other matters, which I find deeply insulting, and frankly, almost childlike, oh, we can't trust you, the ten thousand of us in the civil service don't have to sign one of these, but you law do, so to Mr. Jack's credit, we weren't doing that, not helpful then if somebody goes and takes it out to the media, so, um, councillor Wyatt will have to sort out what he wants to do, but I support the mayor and the speaker's motion today.
Thank you, councillor Schreier.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I want to thank the acting integrity commissioner for, for putting time into this, and for being here today to, uh, give a perspective here live at, at a council meeting through Zoom from Edmonton. This is an issue of conflict, uh, and bear in mind, this is, we're dealing with a recommendation, that's, that's what we're dealing with, that's a recommendation by the acting integrity commissioner for which we have to make a decision, there's a conflict here, and we have to make a decision, so, we have to do our job here, just as the acting integrity commissioner did, just as councillor Wyatt felt he was doing his job, I'm not going to say anything else, because otherwise I'd be impugning his motivations, so, bear in mind, he's not the first member of this council here, of these members of council, to state, uh, that a C A O should resign, let's make that clear. Also, so I am supporting the mayor's, the mayor's motion, uh, because we have to make a decision, so that's fair, we have to make a decision, he's showing us a process in his, in his, in his motion by which we will do that, and it's a timeline, and it's, and it's a reasonable one, um, and the integrity commissioner has made it clear, that it's up to us, that was a recommendation by the integrity commissioner, and it's up to us to make a decision with that information, and whatever information we want to use. Orliko, councillor Orliko called it a hard call, and, uh, having said that, it has been, uh, but in the past for him, for others, for different reasons, when integrity comes into question. Bear in mind, it's natural sooner or later there's going to be conflict, because bear in mind one thing, the, these two buildings, the council building and the administration building, have two separate codes of integrity and conduct, and judgment thereon, bear that in mind, so don't be surprised when there is conflict by which we have to make a decision. They have two separate codes and codes of conduct, the council, members of council, and members of the administration, but because we work together, and there's some sort of power base one over the other, uh, and we have to work with both of them, we have to work with each other, we can't be surprised there's an element of conflict here. Bear in mind, I'm going to say it again, because it's really, really important, this is why we're actually going through the process right now of getting a chief construction officer, why? Integrity, isn't it? Because of what happens when we don't, I'm going to say it again, I've never asked for the resignation of anybody in a C A O, and I, and I sympathize with, with Michael Jack, but to some extent, we have to make the point, this isn't just about him, and this isn't just about councillor Wyatt, we have to admit to the fact that we're going to have to deal with integrity matters, um, over time. I'm going to mention again, that, uh, our former C A O, as a, as the judgment by the appeal court of Manitoba, said in a statement, legal statement by the court, that his dereliction of duty is nothing short of staggering, that was about our previous C A O, in which many of us worked with and under.
Pass C A O, to be fair to Jack, that's in reference to another former C A O.
That's shegel, no, and it's fair to say, I'm not really here to muck rake, but let's say I'm not, okay, you're right, we should say it, that was shegel, and it's, and it's important to say, thank you councillor Mays, I should have more integrity than to just, just to say it blindly like it's any C A O, so, so fair enough, um, and yet, it didn't, that didn't happen in a week or a month, that wasn't a statement, that took years to get to that point, and I'm going to make the point, that that took the soul and the heart out of city hall, out of the administration, out of good members of the administration, out of the newest members of the administration, our newest bureaucrats, and they had to work under that. And who had the strength to say something about that? That took years, do you think we're all healed from that? Two years ago in his parting statements to the media, mayor Brian Bowman didn't think so, he didn't say we're healed from it all, that's how bad it is, how long do you think it's going to take for us to heal the culture of this administration for what happened because of our C A O? And because nobody did anything about it for how many years? For how many years?
Councillor Schreier.
My point is councillor Wyatt had the strength to say, now maybe this suits him by personality, I get it, but it suited the system, he had the strength somehow, maybe by personality, to say something, was he wrong? Well, I'm just saying, it's not about maybe the C A O, it's about process, and sometimes in democracy hurts, sometimes it hurts, so, just bear that in mind, and while we have to make a decision, it's not fun, it hurts, and I empathize for, for anybody, including all members of the administration that delivered through that, and from which, from which we are not yet healed, all right? Bear that in mind when we, I hope we pass this, and have a fair perspective for this council to have to make a decision on this, based on the, based on what we think, what we know, and our integrity, acting integrity commissioner from Edmonton.
Thank you councillor Schreier. Councillor Lard? No, councillor Lard?
Wow, it's the first ti, it's the first time I'm not ruled out of order, and I get to speak. Isn't calling the question always in order though?
Not today councillor Lard.
So we're, we're debating, yeah, I'm like trying to argue against myself, we are on motion four?
Yes.
Okay.
And the main item, you can speak to the amended motion?
Yes, so first off, thank you to the acting integrity commissioner, I know this, these are difficult, uh, difficult, uh, issues to, to deal with, um, I heard what councillor Orliko, Orliko said, um, I, I guess I urge caution, in terms of the power dynamics, I don't know that, from an outsider's point of view, uh, that you might understand, I guess how powerful the city administration is, one of the, one of the first things I was told when I ran for, well, when I was elected was, um, you need two things to be a successful city councillor, uh, one is, it's almost impossible to get anything done without administration support, I found that to be more or less true in my, my terms on council, and the second was to work with your colleagues, and this is a, this is not a colleague-to-colleague thing, so I think councillor Mays mentioned one of those, but that was settled between colleagues, just I heard, um, I heard, um, perhaps I should not paraphrase anyone, because of the context, but I think, um, if we were to do anything over and above what's already prescribed, prescribed councillor Mays, I don't know, um, I think that's, that's a very risky precedent, because if we do that, then who knows what we might do next, um, you know, like councillors are elected, I recall the, in a case of a citizen of Winnipeg, uh, naming former, former mayor Sam Kates, um, in, uh, in a court of Queens, court of Queens bench for, for, um, violation of the municipal act on pecuniary gain in the course of duties of office, or something along those lines, the judge ruled essentially that, uh, maybe, maybe, or, or yes, there, there might have been, but there are elections for that, so, that's what elections are for. So I, I, I do plan to, to support the, uh, thank you Mr. Mayor for your, for your motion, I just, I can think of situations where, uh, I mean, you can, you can debate what the right thing and the wrong thing is, uh, all day, but there may be situations where the right thing to do may not be in line with the, um, the financial, uh, the financial well-being, or the material well-being of the city of Winnipeg, if something has happened that is not, uh, that, there's, there are other considerations than materiality than damages to the city of Winnipeg, so, I could see how, I mean, some councillors have been here for, for a long time and seen a lot of things with former administrations, and I do think it's good to have a code of conduct, um, I know that some of the reasons why, uh, the councillors being asked to do these things from the report is that there was a breach of confidentiality, which we have amended in our code of conduct, though, as is our process, the old code is being used, but the old code said anything not normally available, any information not normally available to the public shall be considered a breach of confidentiality, and I think a lot of information that we have as city councillors is not normally available to the public, um, in fact, probably most of the information that we have, in terms of any private meeting that we have, is not available to public, so, um, I didn't, I, I didn't know I'd be speaking today, but I, I just, I, I think we need to tread very carefully, because this is a, this is a very, it's a, it's an important precedent, in the case of councillor Orliko, councillor Orliko chose to do what was being asked by the integrity commissioner, in this case, we, well, we don't have that yet from, from councillor Wyatt, uh, in other chambers, the legislature and the, and parliament, you have privilege, and, trying to find the quote about privilege, is it Cromwell? I wish I had the quote, I'll have it for next council meeting perhaps, um, but, privilege is there for a reason, privilege is there because, and I know that we don't have privilege, and not only do we not have privilege, but we bound ourselves to a code of conduct that goes over and above privilege, but sometimes, as elected official, you need to say things that are not necessarily favorable to the government, and I get, I get really worried when we start talking about going over and above things that we've already decided will be the rules in which we will govern ourselves.
Thank you.
I, I know it's been, I know it's been a long day, but I do want to keep speaking, I'm not done yet, I just think this is, this is an important, this is a watermark moment for me, um, I've been investigated by the, the integrity commissioner, it's really not fun, it's like, uh, it's like being cross interrogated by a lawyer, which I think essentially is what it is, private, um, but, I mean, any number of us, a few of us are more perhaps divisive than others on some issues, and, I mean, I might be one of those people, some of my colleagues might be some of those people, but sometimes, some of us feel we need to say things that are uncomfortable, uh, and, I mean, at appeals, who was it appeals with me? Councillor Gilroy, you were appeals with me, councillor Dobson, and councillor Santos, so we just had a case where it was likely that a city Winnipeg employee had made a mistake that may have caused damages to neighboring property, so, I mean, I, I just did my job, which is discuss the issue in front of the appeal committee, but from my understanding, the materiality of the mistake was probably on the side of the public service, and had we chosen to demolish a building because it wasn't conforming to some type of document that's required to be, to be vetted before a permit is issued, and the permit was issued, please correct me if I'm wrong, any of my colleagues are, perhaps it's just past that time where anybody has the capacity to listen, but just, just yesterday, just yesterday, I was speaking in public about potential material damages to the city of Winnipeg, and pointing out that the city of Winnipeg maybe should be, might be liable for damages, but I think in that context, it was the right thing to do, and so, I think we need to be really careful with this, I'll be studying this very closely, and I will almost certainly be using my ten minutes, uh, the next council meeting to talk about this, but I think we need to be very, very careful with this, and I think we need to perhaps detach the individual from the, the issues that we're discussing.
Thank you, councillor Gilroy.
I would just like to move that we, that we vote, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Our deputy speaker's not here yet, I wanted to say a few comments, I could hand the chair to you, you Mr. Mayor, just for a moment, yeah.
Acknowledge, uh?
Well, the mayor, okay, the mayor can't have the chair, I guess. Okay, that's okay, all, mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'll have you close.
Okay, uh, you know, simply, uh, I'll invite you to, I'll thank my colleagues for their, their comments, and I am asking for support on this amended motion, I think enough has been said, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with that, we will vote on the amending motion four, all in favor? Contrary? Councillor Rollins recorded an opposition and it's carried, now the main item is amended, all in favor? Contrary? And that's carried, noted. And that's carried, noted. Thank you. Councillor Santos moves adjournment?
Will move, Madam Chair.
All in favor? Contrary? Carried. Roll call, please.
Madam Speaker, councillor Sharma, his worship, Mayor Gillingham, councillors Lard, Ruwadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Gilroy, Lukes, Mays, Orliko, Rollins, Santos, and Schreier.